Good evening Daytona Beach. And welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the August 4th.
Sorry.
Sorry, I was waiting on you. I saw you. August 4th, 2021, meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy to have each of you with us tonight. Ms. La Magna will review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is the opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item that is on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under administrative item number 10 are open for public comments and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 13 is the public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing a green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer for such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
We will now have the invocation led by Commissioner Henry.
I'm going to do the roll call first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Here.
Commissioner Traeger.
Here.
Commissioner Delgado.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
President.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here. And now we will have the invocation led by Commissioner Henry, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Reed.
Gracious and eternal Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to be here to serve you and to serve the citizens of this great community, Daytona Beach. We ask and pray, Heavenly Father, that you will continue to lift up Officer Rayner and his entire family and the entire police department that is supporting him. We ask and pray, Heavenly Father, that soon and very soon, you will find, we will find that we will be beyond this COVID. We ask and pray, Heavenly Father, for all of your blessings. In your son Jesus' name, this is the prayer we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the March 27th, March 27th, 2021, special city commission meeting, the June 30th, 2021 Corona Local Virus Recovery Funds Workshop, and the July 7th, 2021 Regular City Commission Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. We now have our agenda review. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we do have an addendum of 6B, the math boot camp presentation by you, Mayor Henry. Thank you.
Okay.
Move to approve the agenda.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner May. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. All right.
Now move on to item number six, which is our presentations. Item number six A is a presentation for Zone Two. City Commissioner Arrow Delgado has announced his resignation. And we also have the supervisor of elections here to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I guess, Mr. Attorney, you want to tell us what precipitates this, these actions tonight, or what causes us to have these actions?
Sure. As you all know, Commissioner Delgado has tendered a letter of resignation, which has been submitted to the commission. I'll let him explain the basis and the reason for that. In response to that, you have on your agenda tonight, an emergency ordinance setting a special election to fill the position. So the procedures in order to do that are all set out in your charter. Anytime that there is a vacancy created by a resignation more than 12 months from a regular election, that vacancy is filled by a special election. And so the clerk and I have been in contact with the supervisor of elections who is here tonight in order to schedule that event. And you'll see all those details in the resolution, which will come up later for your approval, or the ordinance, I should say.
Okay. Commissioner?
As I put in my letter, you know, I can't control the housing markets, and we were able to sell our house very quickly. And I maintain other properties in Zone Two and throughout Daytona Beach that would keep me a resident of the city and also a resident of Zone Two. But my family found a house in Orange Beach. That's where my wife and kids are going to be. You know, I think legally, I would have probably had an argument that I maintain a residence in the zone, and I could have divided my time off and things like that. But it became clear to me that there were people in the community that were going to oppose that, no matter what I did. And it was not worth it to me to distract from the business of the city by making that an issue. Further, because it would be you, the other commissioners, who decide what is residency? Am I a resident? There would be people who would decry that as not being transparent, and somehow if you agreed, then it was, you know, inside politics, and if you didn't agree, it was whatever. So it's kind of a no-win situation. The last thing I think that I quit was gymnastics in kindergarten. And having watched some of the Olympics, probably better that I did quit at that time. Sorry?
Senator, good looking house.
Thanks, thanks. I appreciate it. So, you know, that being said, I don't feel that I'm necessarily quitting so much as just facilitating you guys to go about doing your business and not having this as a distraction. I regret that the city has to have a special election. I am happy to, I'd be happy to continue to serve until that happens. I don't know that that's possible. I think probably it's better that I not be involved anything further. If there's any question about my residency, I think I'd become ineligible. And again, rather than have any kind of battle about it, I'm just going to take a knee and let you guys have a special election and have someone else elected to fill the post until the normal election cycle. So I definitely leave here better for the experience. I also have shirts and an iPad, which I won't be giving back, so. Richer for the experience, minus a badge. But I definitely have learned a lot, and I have definitely been enriched by the experience. I definitely got more out of it than I could have imagined I would. And I really feel a lot of emotions about leaving tonight, but I know that the city's in a better place than it was, not necessarily through my actions, but just in general than it was, you know, years ago. And you guys are an excellent stewards of this community. We have great staff that works here. We have a great city manager. We have a great police department. We have great first responders. And I have absolute confidence that you guys are going to continue to do a great job. And having been on the backside and seeing how it all works, I'm just, I have nothing but confidence. And I'm still, Daytona will always be a place that holds great concern for me. My business is in Daytona, and this will always be my kind of, my primary interest will always be Daytona Beach. So thank you for the opportunity to have been in service. Wish you all the best of luck, and if there's anything I can do to help you, please don't hesitate to call me. At this point, I have to tender my resignation as city commissioner effective immediately.
All right. Commissioners, you have any comments? Anyone have a comment?
We hate to see you go. Been a pleasure serving with you. Appreciate your wisdom. We can't undo the charter, so that's the way it is.
That's the way it is.
But we wish you success and your family and happiness.
Thank you.
And don't forget Daytona.
I certainly can't.
Yeah, that's right.
And if there's nothing further, Mr. Mayor, I think I'd have to step down now at this time, based on my conversation with Mr. Jagger.
Well, okay, you can step down. Anybody else have any comments?
I just wanted to say thank you for your service.
Thanks, Paula.
It's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you for supporting some of my initiatives, and I hope that our relationship goes beyond the dais.
Absolutely. You don't get rid of me that easy.
I want to say, you've been a champion for the homeless. That has been my best memory of you and how you championed for homelessness, not just in Daytona Beach, but in Volusia County in general. You've brought new, refreshing ideas to the commission that I think at one point we've all supported, and we came together, you and I. And I really am going to miss you, and I wish you the best of luck, and the best of luck to your new young family.
Thank you.
I, I didn't really get to know you as well, being a new commissioner, but I do appreciate your scenario, scenario, heck, even talk today, your service, and I thank you for stepping up and serving Daytona Beach, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
It was nice sitting next to you, and I will say that I enjoyed the mental stimulation of sharing various ideas, sometimes agreeing, sometimes not, but always feeling able to share those ideas and feeling free to speak our minds. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, I, I don't know if you and I have ever been on opposing sides of a vote.
Probably not.
And it definitely wasn't because we didn't think about it. But I know you, I know that you think about things, and you took this work really seriously from a mental perspective. And, you know, it's, when you're the chair, it is, it's refreshing when you have someone that you know is kind of leaning in your direction, and you don't, you know, you're kind of ideologically aligned on a lot of things. And we just, we just are. And to that end, I know that this is not our last hello. You know, you and I will be, we will be friends and better friends because we're not on this commission.
Right. Absolutely.
And we'll be able to do things probably that we've never done before, but we'll be able to do and enjoy each other's families.
I look forward to that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I do too. And your service, I think Commissioner Henry hit it on the head. You've been a champion for the homeless, but you're just a champion for causes that bring people up. And I have a belief, as Daytona rises, the hope is that all, everybody will come in this journey. And you always wanted to make sure that that happened, you know? And so we wish you well. I'm, you know, I'm sorry that it is this way, because Mr. Traeger's right, the charter is the charter. And I think that the way that it's being done is the right way, but doesn't make it any less unenjoyable, because it's not enjoyable. But at any rate, I know that greater is ahead for you and other forms of service. This community would be appreciative of you serving in other capacities and helping. And I think there are other offices for you at a later time.
Thank you.
And that's just what I believe.
Thank you.
So thanks for your service.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you all. It's been a real pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we're going to move on to item 6B, which is Mayor Henry's item that was, presentation that was added to tonight's commission meeting. I'm sorry, it is the math boot camp presentation.
Okay, we have had a great time, and I needed to make this presentation so that you guys would know sort of where we are as a community and sort of what is sort of driving this current thrust and push that we have for education in the city. There's a lot of different things that, you know, we just discussed and have been talking about. But these are the schools in Daytona Beach, and these are their grades. These are the school grades that came out this week. Palm Terrace Elementary is what is referred to as a triple D. Triple D means three Ds in a row, and that is not a good sign. Because the school is close to receivership, if you will, by the state as it could be, but that's not a good sign. Champion is a double D. Long Street is the only school in Daytona Beach of the 10 schools that we have to make an improvement in grade between 2019, 2021. As you know, last year, COVID year, there were no school grades. And the reality is that if a school chooses not to accept these grades for this year, they don't have to. But these are, these would be the grades, you know? So as in the case of Palm Terrace, and I'm not sure what the district is deciding, but they don't have to accept that grade because of COVID. In essence, the grade sort of doesn't count against you in the performance. Westside has received another D. Ortona, which is the new school, which will be called Beachside Elementary, the merging of two schools. And we went to the grand opening, or the groundbreaking, the man, Keith and myself, as well as others from the school district. But it maintained a C. Tertie Small went from a C to a D. These are all of our elementary schools. We have six elementary schools and four, two middle schools. Campbell went from a C to a D, and David C. Henson went from a B to a C. These are the two middle schools that are in our district. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that two of the schools that border Daytona, which is South Daytona and Holly Hill, Holly Hill received a C, which stayed stagnant, and South Daytona, I believe, received a D. But I don't want to be quoted on that, because I'm not looking at it. But that's important because we're feeder schools to those schools. We feed other schools, but we feed those two schools probably more than most others. Our high schools, Mainland High School has an incomplete grade. That is not a negative thing. It just means that something is not completed in the state's computation. Could be in the, I think, two schools in the district received that, but the grade should be complete at some point in the very near future. And Seabreeze went from a B to a C. And so I show all of that to say that we are not in, and when you get ready and you want to attract families to your city, it's important for us to know that the first thing that most people do is that they look at these grades. And so we're not having trouble attracting families or retirees because they don't have children. But people with children are avoiding the city of Daytona Beach. They would rather live in a municipality where the school grades are higher. And so that's not an attractive sign for your, for our community, and quite frankly, it should be one of the most pressing issues facing us. It should, and I recognize that the school district has a budget. But what we have to remember is that it's clear that we need more resources, more of a community effort from the ground up. Now, from the ground up, I should say from the womb up. You know, we need to be supporting our children and their intellectual and cultural development. And so to that end, that is, you know, I anticipated that these grades would be like this, because we knew the impact that COVID was having on children, and that's evidence. We can't just say that COVID is affecting business. We can't simply say that COVID is affecting residents. We see it in crime across the country, but those grades show that it is affecting children. So that should be a special, a spicer, spicier. But it was spicy, and this ironically, we have a very special thank you to the mayor's boot camp, because this boot camp, it was multiplication-based, and we'll see a little more on it in just a second. But after the numbers from the boot camp came forward, do you all have the, the, can you show the video? Go ahead and show that for me.
Fun and learning are going hand in hand this summer at the Math Party, the mayor's multiplication boot camp, which is part of the mayor's literacy program. Through song, chant, dance, and exercise, third and fourth graders at two of the city's summer camps are getting a boost in their math skills.
They can do it. They have an opportunity to learn while they're having fun. And the other thing that's important to us is exercise, movement, motion, and the whole old philosophy of sitting and getting, it doesn't work for all kids. So she gets them up, moving, dancing, exercising.
The Math Party curriculum is developed and delivered by Dr. Stephanie Paisley Henry, who was inspired to find creative ways to connect with kids after seeing her fifth-grade students struggle with math.
My students, they were just apprehensive and defeated when it came to learning math. And I said, what am I going to do? I'm teaching fifth grade, and my students can't add, subtract, multiply, or divide. So we're working on the division lesson, and I told the students, look, you're going to divide, multiply, subtract, then bring down, just as simple as that. Well, they didn't get it that way. So I stepped into the classroom, and I said, look, kids, in order to divide, you're going to, mm, divide, mm, multiply, mm, subtract, mm, bring it down. These are the four steps, and then you take it back around, oh. And guess what? They got it. I spoke their language, I stepped outside of the box, and I said, you know what? I am going to teach to the rhythm of my students' beat.
Using her creative approach, Dr. Paisley Henry works with students for about two hours each day, and it is making a difference.
I like the Math Party because it helps me learn and helps math being fun, and it helps me write down the words in my book and helps me learn better.
Math Party participants also receive a special kit with an audio CD, DVD, student book, and colorful, content-rich posters, so the learning continues at home. More importantly, though, these energetic kids can see that learning can be fun, and they can learn their math skills. Watch out, teachers, here they come.
All right. And I would say that two hours, you know, most days Stephanie would try to get over there at nine, when it was supposed to be from 10 to 12. But she usually did two and a half to three hours, because that's just, it was really a boot camp, because she's a pusher. She's a driver, and she drove them and pushed the kids pretty hard, but it does, if we can go back, it is coupled with fun. And the whole idea is that this is summertime. So one of the things that you want to do when it's summer is that you want it to, you don't want it to feel like school, but you want it to supplement, you know, what's, what the kids are learning and what they're doing. So you don't want it to feel like school, but you want to make sure that they are learning. So after this was over, after the second session, Dr. Joan Thompson came to the second session's conclusion. And after, she got so excited that she gave every child who attended $25 to help start their school year. And that's because she saw their performance, saw their enthusiasm, and saw the numbers of how they learn. One of the things that we have to remember, I'm on a quest to get our children exposed to positive content in every environment that they go in. Part of this is that when they go into stores and the restaurants, I want them to, I want to, I have a later initiative that's going to come up, I'm going to want them to have more books for kids to read and have access to when they are in those settings. When they are in our summer programs, I believe it's eight weeks, eight weeks at five days is 40 days. Forty days at eight hours a day is equivalent, ladies and gentlemen, to a nine weeks of school. That's one-fourth of the time that they spend in school, these kids are sending, spending in our summer recreational programs. And so what I saw is that this is an opportunity for us to say, we're not just going to play kickball, we're not just going to shoot baskets, and I'm all for athletics. I always tell you all that. But we have to use that time to stop what we refer to as a summer brain drain. And I think that we should be doing programs like this all over Volusia County, especially in places like our Boys and Girls Programs and other areas that really target our children. So what we found, we thank Dr. Thompson, but these were the results. Session one had 18 students, June 21 to July 2. They take a pre-test of 100 questions. None of them even knew it was 100 questions. The average child scored a 48% on their multiplication tables. At the end, the average child scored an 86%. The second session was at the Midtown Center. The average child scored a 54% on the pre-test, and the post-test, the average child scored an 85. Now, what you have to remember is that the largest improvement here, it shows, was 11% to 89%. We had one child, because a lot of times when kids come in the third grade, they haven't been exposed to multiplication. That's the grade that they're first exposed to it. But they go out, and they pretty much, many of them mastered their tables based on this. And if we can get the parents to simply play the CD, play the DVD, we know that they will go to school this year ahead of the curve in that domain. Then, of course, you're going to have some that already knew multiplication, which there were several who scored in 95, their fifth grade, but it only strengthens those. And the thing that was most impressive as it related to them, none of them rejected the program, even those that knew their tables. So with that said, I have a presentation I'd like to make, because Stephanie, if you would join me. In case you all don't know this, Stephanie happens to be my wife. Might not know that, but when we went away to, we went to Italy, we were away for three or four days, we missed three days of the camp. And for a program like this to be maximized and to be its very best, you need a staff that embraces the program. that embraces the program. That's important. It's, it's, I say this, that a supplement is like, supplements are just like any other supplement. If you take vitamin D supplements, it's better than you get some sun with that too. Makes the supplement stronger. Well, this is a supplemental program that was stronger because when we went away, there was one staff person who took her job to another level. And pardon? Let them know what? Okay. She took her job to another level. Um, and, and, and it, it got so much that every night when Stephanie would come home, he was talking about this person and how great they were and how awesome they were. Well, I, I talked to both. I'm sorry, I, I talked to the commissioner and talked to. Um, and so she was talking about how great she was and how awesome she was and what a great job she was doing. And what I'm saying tonight is that when we have staff like this, we can truly transform our community centers. And so, Ms. Williams, if you would, please come up. And I will turn this way. This is a special recognition because not everyone takes the initiative and has the drive to want to make kids better and want to make their job be successful in their work. It's inspiring. Truly, you have inspired us. You, she inspired the kids. She, she handled the kids. She loved the kids and she's made a difference. So this, um, recognition is for, um, Tahara Williams, whose mother I taught. And, and, um, that was, it just doesn't surprise me. I'll just leave it at that. Please accept this letter in recognition of your significant contributions to the Mayor's Multiplication Boot Camp, which is part of the Mayor's Literacy Initiative. I sincerely appreciate your extraordinary efforts and the time you took to support this important program. When your opportunity to step up and make a difference came, you stepped up and made a difference as the students worked to enhance their math skills. When papers needed to be graded and dances needed to be choreographed, you took the work home to ensure that it was completed. That's right. She went, took the work home at night, studied the dances, studied the routines without being asked. That was important. She was never asked to do anything extra. She chose to do it, do extra. And when we went to Italy for three days, she said, don't worry, I've got this. And she kept these children right on path, kept them moving and striding along. The children under your care showed great learning gains, had fun, responded with positive She's, she's, he's with us too. attitudes. And, uh, but now, uh, I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the great work of, The city of Daytona Beach is appreciative of your efforts and recognizes you as a community star, a difference maker, and a model of possibility for our children. uh, Dr. Henry, who probably volunteered close to eight hours a day of her time and donated I sincerely thank you. She worked. In there is extra because she did beyond extra. those resources. Each kit retails to school districts, uh, probably $250 a kit to each of those kids. Uh, so she, uh, is, is what I have all told, always told people, um, I'm just looking for how I can unleash her talents to the community. Um, her products and success as an educator, uh, is, is national and international. But I have wanted, and she and I both have sought ways to figure out how we could infuse her talents, uh, into our community. And I want to thank you for doing what you've done. Um, and I'm hoping to have this, you know, replicated in our center so that if we can get more Tahara's and, uh, I think our kids will be the better off for it. But if you would, um, come back and, uh, accept a small token of my appreciation for what you've done, uh, to, to, so please come back. For volunteering and giving your time, your resources, your energy, your expertise, your excellence, your professionalism, and your love to the students and children of Daytona Beach, I sincerely appreciate you for making the Mayor's Multiplication Boot Camp through the Math Party a huge success.
I'm not on chocolate right now, but I'm.
Thank you.
I'm sure we all want to say thank you to Ms. Williams and Dr. Henry. I hope you can adapt this to the school year to help the kids catch up from the year that they missed. I think it's a wonderful program. And I, it's just like a pebble thrown in the water. It spreads out and spreads out. Now, this will make a big difference to those children and hopefully to the other children who will be inspired also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, um, if I could just be a one more Willie here. I know you taught Tahara's mom. She went to my preschool.
That means she went to my preschool too. Yes, you want to say something? I'm sorry. Come, come, come up. You got to be it.
It's got to be official.
To piggyback on what you were saying with trying to keep it going through the school year, I will be, um, continuing my work with the city of Daytona Beach. So with the sites that I'm going to be at with the students, I'm going to try to get students to come and teach Ms. Hen, Dr. Henry's work to them while she's away and while I'm at the center with them. So I'm going to keep that going. I won't stop that.
Dr. Henry. Uh, Dr. Henry's wanting to steal her. And hey, I can't blame her. That's why I say she's ours too. All right.
Okay. We're going to move on to item number seven. This is public comments by people addressing the City Commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the City Commission on any item on the consent agenda. And I have one speaker, Mr. John Nicholson, who's speaking on item 8B.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue, speaking on 8B, uh, with regard to the finalization for Beach Street, the cost. Um, many of you recall, we were told it would be a $3 million cost and then there would be another $3 million for the seawall. And then we were getting a gift of, I think it was $26 million for a park from Hyatt Brown. Uh, as you can see, this is not a $3 million tabulation. Uh, the seawall, I think it might be over budget as well. I know they're taking longer than they expected. Adding to this, of course, is the conversation to the extension north of Beach Street. We, that was never discussed until Jim was ready to leave and it popped up that we're adding another probably three to four million dollars there. So the total cost that's being put into downtown is somewhere near $40 million. That's a nice incentive. When we compare that to Beachside, which is a quarter of only $1 million. So I know we're anticipating spending money on the beach site in the years to come, but in the last five years, the, uh, at the last election, the mayor and Jim put out a brochure, how much was spent? 140, 151 million dollars over that five-year period. Uh, the beach side portion of that will be spent sometime in the future, but it hasn't been spent yet. So what has been spent so far is three-quarters of a million dollars on A1A over the five years. All right? So what I'm asking you is I understand that it will make a dynamic Beach Street. I pushed for the extension of Beach Street to Main Street. It was logical because that's where the development, once you put in Hyatt Brown, it's logical and if we help, it will encourage people to build on those sections. All right? But it's still a disproportionate when you only have less than $1 million in one area of the city and 40 million in one and 40 million in the other one. So when you're talking three areas of the city, Midtown, Downtown, and Beachside, you get 40 million here and 40 million here and you only get less than a million dollars here, it isn't equitable. There wasn't equity, there isn't equality, there is a need to spend money on the beach side. Beachside gives a ton of money into the general fund and we get what, 5% of it back? It is not equitable. It's not fair. All right? The commercial property is moving drastically. We need the city to clean up and fix up all the property that it owns. I asked the county to do Dolphin Park and they did it within 14 hours. I'm asking you to spend money on the beach side, on the boardwalk, on A1A, and all the areas that the city owns. Thank you.
I just don't understand how you could say that we spent $40 million and you named $4 million for this project, you named the seawall, and then you named $26 million gift. That wouldn't be $40 million of our money. So it's just, just, but just go ahead. I just want to make, I'm, that's why I'm clarifying it because it sounds like we spent $40 million when, when, but just, you're done. It just sounds like we spent $40 million when someone else spent $26 million of that 40 million that you described. But go ahead.
That was my only speaker for the consent agenda.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion to, uh, in a second, motion from Commissioner May, second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Moving on to item nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Neighborhood F, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, deleting a Neighborhood F future land use policy that prohibits retail uses on properties adjacent to South Ridgewood Avenue from South Street, South Street to Wilder Boulevard, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, seven zero, six zero. Kind of remember that.
We're going to move on to item 9B, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Land Development Code text amendment, B O, Board of Adjustment Quorum. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance amending section 2.5 point I of Article 2 of the Land Development Code to amend the quorum and necessary voting requirements of the Board of Adjustments, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Henry.
I have no speakers for this item.
All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Kind of remember that.
We're going to move on to item 9B, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Land Development Code text amendment, B O, Board of Adjustment Quorum. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance amending section 2.5 point I of Article 2 of the Land Development Code to amend the quorum and necessary voting requirements of the Board of Adjustments, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Uh, we have a motion, we have a second.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, seven zero, six zero. Kind of remember that.
We're going to move on to item 9B, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Land Development Code text amendment, B O, Board of Adjustment Quorum. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance amending section 2.5 point I of Article 2 of the Land Development Code to amend the quorum and necessary voting requirements of the Board of Adjustments, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Henry.
I have no speakers for this item.
All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
The second public hearing will be August 18th.
Mr. Mayor, if I may have a little point of privilege. Zone 6 needs a representative for the Adjustment Board. If you have some experience in construction, you live in the zone and/or if you are employed in the zone, please fill that seat. We have an elder who has resigned from that position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could anybody else hear me? Okay. All right. Zone 6 needs representation for that zone, you don't need to turn me off, I'll speak louder. Zone 6 needs representation for that seat for the, um, Adjustment Board. If you have experience in construction, if you work in that zone and/or live in that zone, please consider representing the zone. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 9C, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Masonova Commerce Park, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, in relation to 14.6 plus or minus acres of land, the subject property generally located south of Mason Avenue, west of Nova Road, north of Madison Avenue, and east of Briarwood Drive, amending the future land use map designations of portions of the subject property as follows. 3.4 plus or minus acres from Level 1 residential to retail, 2.4 plus or minus acres from Level 2 residential to retail, and 2.9 plus or minus acres from Level 2 residential to park recreation, and 5.9 plus or minus acres from Level 1 residential to park recreation, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Henry.
I have no speakers on this item.
May I ask a question? What was the snag with the News Journal?
The, the, the News Journal did not advertise the appropriate timeframe on it and did not make it in appropriately. It was nothing that staff did. So there are about four items that are going back up to make sure that the proper advertisement was done to give, um, access to the public to know that this was coming forward.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
The public hearing is set for October 6th. Moving on to item 9D, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Hand Avenue, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statute, in relation to 22.2 plus or minus acres of land, the subject property generally located northeast of the intersection of Williamson Boulevard and Hand Avenue, amending the future land use map designation of 4.9 plus or minus acres of the subject property from Volusia County Commercial to City Level 2 Residential, amending the future land use designation of 17.3 plus or minus acres of the subject property from Volusia County Urban Medium, Medium Intensity to City Level 2 Residential, amending the future, the future land use element, Neighborhood S Development Policy with regard to the subject property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May.
I have no speakers for this item.
All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
The public hearing is set for October 6th. Moving on to item 9E, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Project Zeta, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statute in relation to 23.2 plus or minus acres of land, the subject property generally located approximately 2,500 feet northeast of the intersection of West International Speedway Boulevard and LPGA Boulevard, amending the future land use map designation of 5.3 plus or minus acres of the subject property from Level 1 residential to mixed use, amending the future land use designation of 10.9 plus or minus acres of the subject property from Level 2 residential to mixed use, amending the future land use designation of 7 plus or minus acres of the subject property from office transition to mixed use, amending the future land use element Neighborhood U development policy with regard to the subject property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner May.
I have no speakers for this item.
All right, all those in favor, let it be denoted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. This motion carries 6-0.
The public hearing is set for October 6. Going to move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item 10A is the City Clerk calling a special municipal election for Zone 2, emergency ordinance. Emergency ordinance calling for a special election to elect a City Commissioner, Zone 2, due to a vacancy occurring on July 26, 2021, providing for a primary municipal election, if necessary, to be held on September 21, 2021, providing for the general municipal election to be held on November 2, 2021, establishing and providing for a qualifying period for candidates, election procedures, polling places, and the date for taking office and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and we'll take a second from Commissioner May. Traeger, okay.
I have no speakers for this item.
All right, have a motion and a second.
Mayor, we do have the Supervisor of Elections here.
No, she left.
Oh, she did, I'm sorry. Okay, I apologize.
She was here for 6A.
She was here first for 6A.
Very good.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission? No questions? All right. We don't need to appoint one person, do we?
Oh, we do need to do that. So the commission needs to appoint a commissioner to be a representative for the testing of the equipment.
The logic and accuracy testing.
Logic and accuracy testing, it's known as. So that'll be at the Supervisor of Elections office. I have the dates here, give me one second.
I'm going to nominate. Commissioner Cantu.
Newbie.
Actually, I don't mind. I've been a clerk before.
Oh, okay. All right. Oh, really, great. Great choice, Commissioner Henry.
And those dates, and these will be advertised, and literally as we leave tonight, I'm going to go back to my office and send the advertising to the News Journal. But so the public logic and accuracy testing for the primary, if needed, will be September 9 at 9:00 a.m., and that's into lands. And for the general election will be October 22, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. And I'll provide you with all that information.
Special election is like a sprint. I'm telling you guys, it is a sprint. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. Let the fun begin.
Yes, the dates are going to be posted on the website tomorrow. Like I said, there's going to be advertising in the paper, and we're going to be posting them around City Hall as well. So we're going to... Okay, we're going to move on to item 10B, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Third Amendment to Minto-Tomoka Parcel B Plan District Agreement, Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the Third Amendment to Minto Parcel B Plan District Agreement, amending the Plan District Agreement with respect to the commercial area of the Plan District located on the north side of LPGA Boulevard and east side of Timber Creek Road by adding additional commercial uses and additional signage, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Third Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Henry. We'll take a second from Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Cantu and then Commissioner Traeger. All those, no questions? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
The public hearing is set for August 18. Moving on to item 10C, it's the Development and Administrative Services Anti-Discrimination Income Source. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance creating Section 5426 to 5429 of Chapter 54 of the Code of Orchesters to prohibit source of income discrimination in the rental of residential dwelling units within the city and providing for enforcement and penalties and providing for an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any questions?
Can I have a little clarification? What do they mean under it? I don't quite understand lawful income. I mean, does that mean that if you want to rent to somebody, you... Yeah, thank you.
All right. So this ordinance is essentially designed to fill a gap between state law and federal law, which your current state law and federal law prohibits many types of discrimination, race, sex, gender, disability. What it does not prohibit is discrimination based on source of income. The typical type of source of income we think of with this type of discrimination is section 8 housing or social security benefits. And what has happened in the marketplace, according to research and data, is that oftentimes landlords may not be willing to rent to certain persons because of that public assistance, because it requires additional burdens on them to work with those administrations and to undergo inspections in order to receive that housing benefit. And so this ordinance will make it unlawful as a city code violation to discriminate against persons receiving public assistance in their rental practices.
Does that mean if somebody applies for some housing that you have to rent them whether you want to or not? Whether you think maybe that...
It doesn't quite...
Somebody else will come along?
So a landlord can still turn down an application for tenancy based on reasons unrelated to the source of income or other forms of discrimination. So in other words, if they have a criminal record or some other basis for turning them down, that would still be a legitimate basis for refusal to rent. On the other hand, if they discriminate on the basis of the fact that they receive housing assistance from a federal government or other program, that would be unlawful and they'd be subject to...
But if, for instance, they don't want to bother with the extra paperwork or something like that, they could not turn them down for that reason?
That would be a form of discrimination prohibited by this ordinance, yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? We have a motion. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
The public hearing is set for August 18. Okay. Moving on to item 10D, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Pro-S and K Plan District PD Agreement Request for Extension. This is a resolution. A resolution extending development deadlines established by Pro and S-K Plan District Agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing effective date. That is not right.
Just a second.
Give me one second. Look this up. And that's how it's written on the resolution. So it should be repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So that will be noted in the record.
That'll be noted in the record. So let me repeat that section again. A resolution extending development deadlines established by Pro-S and K Plan District Agreement, repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Okay. You have a motion from Commissioner Henry, and who was the second from?
May.
Commissioner May? Okay. And this will be denoted in the record. She says, does anyone have any questions? All those in favor, let it be... Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. I just want to say I can't support this because it's been too much time. I do think they should have to reapply. I mean, it's been, what, almost 11 years? 12 years? Something like that? I think they should have to reapply.
Well, you know, that is a long time, and we've said this before. Planning recommends adoption of the resolution. You want to tell us why you recommend that?
I think, I think it's going, it really is dealing with, I think, based on the discussions I've had with market conditions. They had previous owners. And so I'll let Mr. Morris, but I think that there were some conditions that caused for this to take place.
That's right. Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager. Mr. Morozic has headed back to his office. From the standpoint of the time it's taken so far, the manager mentioned a part of it. It's also a property that's consistent with the area in terms of development. And the likelihood is, if someone does proceed, they'll proceed the same way. You have a certain administrative efficiency in terms of a use that's appropriate for the property. And it would be roughly the same thing in terms of configuration and impact. If someone disagrees with that change in terms of the configuration, I should say, and wants to change it, they can come back and do it. So from the perspective of the public safety, part of the regulations, and whether or not public safety is somehow damaged by allowing it to extend, we don't see that that is an issue and that, from a standpoint of the land use, it's appropriate. And can't think of a practical reason other than general principles to not to extend it.
There was a change of ownership here as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
The previous owners failed to do what was required, and so a new ownership has come in, and that's why they're asking for the extension dealing with the market.
And from that perspective, that owner understood the expiration date, but also understood the rights that have been approved and also probably from the standpoint of the history of other extensions that have been granted, that part as well.
So how much money do you think they saved by us extending this to them?
Hard to say because it's, I think it's more in time than money, although money is certainly an issue. If you own the property outright, you got a use that's permitted. You got an application fee and so on. So let's just put that number at probably $6,000, $7,000 in terms of resubmission. You got staff time associated with that, which is an expense that the city encounters. We do have some offset from the fees that are charged, but there is that component of it. And you've got the advertising and so on, which we bear. We do charge that back. You've seen what's happened with the News Journal lately in terms of delay by their failure to advertise. And you have a lack of certainty in terms of the land use so that the part of it really gets to someone investing in development and moving forward. When it's turnkey and ready to go, they're much more likely to move forward than if they've got to go through the whole process, which is going to take between four and six months from inception to completion, even without opposition, so that you have something where the property is more able to be developed for purposes that will hopefully bring economic growth to the city. It's a 17,000-plus-square-foot building presently for industrial use in an area where we would expect that kind of use. The pros and cons of it in terms of harm done, we see little harm or any harm done. You see inefficiency in terms of staff time, city commission time, property owner time. And in terms of the ability to have concurrency, you've got to have your traffic studies done at the right time when you develop. Same thing for water and sewer demand.
And the particular potential for the new developer or the new submittal, it could be the exact same request.
Precisely.
But the advertisement, the funds, the application fee will have to be repaid by the individual. And that's why I think that the planning manager decided to move forward because an individual can come in and submit the same exact thing. And the only difference is, we will be charging them all of the fees again for resummital. And that process has to start all over. So it pushes them back. And for me, it puts that barrier bureaucratic, bureaucratic barrier back up that we are trying to remove.
Any other questions from anyone else?
Do we generally have a time limit just on record? Or is it a case-by-case situation?
It has been case-by-case. I would say the commission has discussed this several times with several different sorts of requests. And a policy could be developed so that people have, and staff has, a better idea of what's wanted. Because typically, each person asks for different things or each applicant asks for different things. It's something that could be addressed, although at this moment, the subject is before you.
And I do understand Commissioner Traeger's concern of not just letting people have a permit that sits out there. But when you have the change of owners, that puts an impediment in place that you have to make sure you can move forward. And with the time in the market, it was just not available.
And the other component that must be remembered, concurrency is invested. It's only the land use. So concurrency in terms of traffic, water, sewer, all those things are determined at the time the development comes online and they pay the fees appropriate to that. So there are impact fees and so on, which will be collected at a later date, presuming they are able to achieve concurrency. So that is a risk the property owner runs. As time passes, more development occurs, everything seems to rise. And just unbalanced, when you weigh what's protected and what's lost, we think there's very little or anything lost. Some rights are protected, and you have the incipient ability to move forward and develop the property and put it in play without something that the outcome would be predictably the same, even if we just did it all over again.
Okay. All right, we have any other questions? No further questions? We do have a motion. Thank you, Jim. In a second.
And I had no speakers for this item.
Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay. Moving on to item 10E, the City Manager's Office, Daytona Beach Racing and Recreational Facilities Commission Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing one member to the Daytona Beach Racing and Recreational Facilities District Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2025, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
Good evening. This agenda item is to appoint one member to the Daytona Beach Racing and Recreation Facility District. The membership term of Christopher Bowler has expired, and he would like to be reappointed. And we have a nomination?
Move, reappoint him.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public speakers for this item.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six, zero.
Moving on to item 10F, it's the City Manager's Office Downtown Development Authority Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing one member to the Downtown Development Authority Board for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2024, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
This agenda item is to appoint one member, a commissioner, to the Downtown Development Authority. The appointment is for the city commissioner's position, and Commissioner Juanita May would like to continue to serve on this board.
Move, Phil, I'll continue. I said move.
So moved, okay. Moved by Commissioner Traeger and seconded by Commissioner Reed.
I have no public speakers for this item.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero. Thank you for serving.
Moving on to item 10G, it's the City Manager's Office Planning Board Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing one member to the Planning Board for a term expiring December 31st, 2022, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
This agenda item is to appoint one member to the Planning Board representing Zone 3. We have received one application from Mr. James Newman for this position. Commissioner May?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Newman, please. Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Traeger.
I have no public speaking on this item.
Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero. Thank you, Ms. Goodman.
Now move on to item number 11, which is the discussion item. It's a discussion on the 2:00 AM bar closings in the Seabreeze neighborhood.
Okay. Of course, this was an item that I first mentioned quite a while back. And I guess the first thing I should say is that we have to remember that 2:00 AM bar closing, 3:00 AM bar closing is all a privilege in the city of Daytona Beach. I could be up here discussing 12:00 AM bar closings. But we're discussing 2:00 AM bar closing because we are the only place in Volusia County who has 3:00 AM bar closing. The only place. Nowhere else in Volusia County permits this. And not many other places in Florida. So this is, while much of the discussion tonight will surround Seabreeze, it is not simply about Seabreeze or Main Street. It would, it is about the entire city. And so at this time, our city attorney will give us a summary of our current status and what, what this means in this discussion. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor. So, in general, the sale of alcoholic beverages is preempted to the state. They regulate the sale of beverages and alcoholic establishments. They've created an exception with regard to establishing the hours of operation after midnight. So local governments, like the city, are entitled to establish those hours of operation between midnight and 7:00 AM. The city, in that regard, has adopted a section of its code, it's Section 10-3. It's called Hours of Sale and Consumption, wherein we extend the right for establishments dealing in alcoholic beverages to operate until 3:00 AM. At 3:00 AM, they must be closed, and all patrons have to be out the door. As part of that permitting scheme, if you will, there are certain requirements. So under your permitting scheme, the permit, first of all, is an annual permit. It's renewed annually with a $100 fee. It's subject to CPI adjustments. I don't know what the actual fee is right now, but roughly $100. The establishment must also have security cameras, and they must maintain that video for 45 days. And they have to turn that video over to the city if requested. In addition, they must prevent intrusive lighting into the neighborhoods. And they must comply with all laws, including prohibiting consumption of alcohol in their parking lots. With regard to the closing requirements, last call is at 2:30. And as I said, everyone has to be out by 3:00. That permit is subject to being suspended for certain events that occur. If there are continued parking violations, the suspension, or the permit can be suspended. If there are excessive calls for law enforcement service, and by that I mean more than three events in one calendar year, the license can be suspended. And in addition, if there are adverse impacts to the neighborhood, more than three times in a year, again, the license can be suspended. So adverse impacts are generally parking violations or crimes as a result of patrons leaving the establishment, like car break-ins or theft, that sort of thing, there can be a suspension. And finally, there is a provision for an emergency revocation of the license or suspension in the case of emergency. If there's a riot or something occurring in the bar, the police chief can step in and close down the establishment and suspend the license for those purposes. Any questions with regard to the licensing scheme?
All right, well, thank you very kindly. We'll start our discussion by with some questions for us to discuss as a commission. First question is, what, what do we feel that we've gained by having this exception? What, how does it benefit our city? I mean, this is for us to discuss. Does this, having this exception, in order to have it, there has to be a reason that we have it?
Well, at one time, it was 4:00. And we pushed it back to 3:00. If somebody wants to get inebriated, they will get inebriated, whether it's 2:00, 3:00, 1:00, 12:00. They're going to do it.
So yeah, doesn't matter what time they get inebriated.
If that's what they want to do, they're going to do it.
They're going to get drunk.
And it's just, we are a tourist town. People come here on vacation, and they do want to have someplace to go, some things to do. At one time, we had the Haili, and we had the dog races. And now, even though the dog race place is open, they don't race the dogs. But they do have poker and slot machines and stuff like that. Haili, we don't have at all. And like I said, we are a tourist town. I, my opinion, I think we should keep it the way it is.
Okay. And the reason that we should keep it the way it is is because we're a tourist town.
Well, I've heard, I've heard people say about the noise and everything. Well, according to Mr. Jagger, there are rules against that. I live right off Atlantic Avenue. I don't have any problem. I mean, I go to bed, turn up the TV. And even though some people, when there's truck meet or something like that, get a little bit disgusting. It's enough to shine a light on them. Hopefully, embarrass them a might. But I, I don't see any advantage to Daytona Beach to moving back the time.
Okay. Anyone else, as it relates to what we've gained, or the positives of having this?
I wouldn't call it positives. I would say that I took some time, and I spoke to some owners on, some restaurateurs, hotel owners and bar owners on Main Street, as well as Seabreeze. And I wanted their input on this, because I did receive input, as we all did, from residents. And I wanted to weigh it against that. And I asked them what this would do. And the response seemed to be, and I asked if I could actually say it out loud, and they said yes, was that it allowed a tapering off effect. So I'm just here.
What? I didn't, what is it allowed?
A tapering off effect. And what that means is that instead of people leaving at one time, that they could leave over a period of time. Now, this is from the bar owners on Seabreeze and one on Main Street as well. And the concept was that instead of leaving, everybody leaving at 2:00, that they could sort of have interval timeframes. They could leave at 12:00, they could leave at 1:00, they could leave at 2:00, they could leave at 3:00. This was what was said to me, I'm merely stating it in return. And that's what they said.
But how would you determine who leaves at what time?
Defending a position? I'm just, I'm not defending a position, what I am saying is.
This is a discussion.
Right. I just don't see that happening. Bar owners saying, okay, they're breaking. It's time for you to leave, it's time for you to leave. That will not happen in a nightclub.
And, and as Commissioner Reed said, this is, this is intended to be, as we say, a discussion. And that's why I frame it with questions, so that we can talk about it. Clearly, I wouldn't, if I didn't believe that it had some merit, I wouldn't raise the issue. But I also understand and want to hear the lack of merit. You know, what, or the, you know, you know, tapering off effect, that, you know, that one doesn't rationalize with me too well, but I understand that. And if it's a fact that we're a tourism destination, and we are that, we cannot deny that we are a tourism destination. And you want to have things for people to do. But there comes a time, you know, there's, you know, arguments clearly against that too. You know, but, okay, is there any, can we think of anything else that we gain as a, that we gain that makes this something that's beneficial to us? Okay. Well, what does it cost us? I mean, what, what does it, what has it cost us? Does it cost us anything? Is, does it, does it negatively affect us? We talked about what we gained, and we listed those two things. What does it cost? What are the, the cons or the, yeah?
Well, like I said, if they want to get drunk, they're going to get drunk by 12, by 1, by 2, by 3.
Your microphone.
Like I said, if they want to get drunk, they're going to get drunk by 12, by 1, by 2, by 3, whatever. They're going to get drunk.
Okay.
Well, it probably costs us extra policing. Because one, if we're the, can y'all hear me? Extra policing, because if we're the only place that closes at 3:00, then everybody's coming here for that last hour. Or they're coming here the last two hours. So, you know, that's just additional.
I'm going to remind the audience that the discussion on the day is.
Yeah, this is for us. Please don't talk. I ask you to be dismissed.
And this is, this is a discussion, and I'm saying what it might possibly be. So unfortunately, we don't have, we don't have any stats on this for us tonight on, on what is it costing us?
Okay. Well, does anybody else have any, what it might cost us? Okay. I don't know financially what it cost us. But what we have to be cognizant of is more than the finances of what it might cost. We attract 10 million people a year in Volusia County. Probably 8 million of them come to Daytona Beach. But that number has been relatively more or less stagnant. It hasn't really gone to the next level of where we would want to think that it should over the last eight or 10 years. So we need to do things that I believe that will help us to be a more attractive destination. And if we are truly a tourist destination, as Commissioner Traeger says we are, does this really attract tourists? You know, that's a question that we should ask ourselves. Does having, you know, later bars open, is that a, an attractive thing for tourists and for people to visit us? What I will say is that if you go to any TripAdvisor, and you read what they say about Daytona Beach, or if you see the articles that they post about Daytona Beach, or the videos that they show about Daytona Beach, it ain't pretty. And it's typically associated with, it is not associated with Dave and Busters. It's not associated with Game Time. It's not associated with, what's our beach water park? Daytona Lagoon. It's not associated with any of those locations that attract people. It's typically not associated with the beach itself. Now, sometimes, some of it will talk about the events, but it's typically associated with our nightlife. That's what it, that's typically what they talk about, is the Daytona Beach nightlife. And it gives off a list of reasons as to why a person shouldn't visit Daytona Beach. Stay away from Daytona Beach. If you read, just go on there for yourself tonight and read about some of them. And read what they say about us as a destination. And so, in my opinion, it costs us a piece of our reputation. And our reputation is something that we, as a community, are trying to improve. I also want to share some statistics with you all. And the chief will come on in just a moment. But I do want to share this, some of, some statistics with you all as it relates to us and our neighbors. If you look at the statistics of Daytona Beach compared to Holly Hill or Porter Orange, you will find that our statistics are far greater in terms of crime than our neighboring cities. Now, of course, I can't, I didn't bring my glasses, so I can't even see where the statistics are. But I'll come back, I'll find them in just a moment. But our statistics are far greater, three, four times, any municipality around. That's Holly Hill, and it's twice as great as South Daytona when you break it down by any statistical category. And we're the only one that allows for bars to be open until 3:00. So the question is, what has it cost us? It cost us, in my opinion, probably our most important thing as a tourism destination. The most important thing that you have as a tourism destination is what is your reputation? What are you known for? And by too many standards, we're known for crime, drugs, place to have a good time after hours. Now, and we know, we know that we're not just that. That's something that we know. We, if you live here, and you, you know, you know better. And I live here, and I know better. I take my kids places all over this city, and I'm happy to take them places all over this city. And I invite people to come to this city. But I don't invite them to certain places and certain things at certain times. Okay, so the question is, is it worth it? Daytona Beach is also, as we know, one of the poorest cities in the country. We have a median annual household income of just $31,273. The city's low median income, we know, is due to a lot of factors. The News Journal online site noted that a site opened, when you open to the front page with a video box in the lower right-hand corner, this is on the News Journal, plays a melee on Seabreeze late night with a woman being carried while screaming. You can go to News Journal most days, and you'll see that. Same video, I've watched it too many times. Probably should stop watching it so they'll stop showing it. There were 3,627 crimes reported in Daytona Beach, Florida in 2019. The most recent year crime data is available. Adjusted for population, the city's annual crime rate is 5,194 incidents for every 100,000 people. How do we compare? Daytona Beach has one of the highest overall crime rates of any US city for comparison. The national total crime rate is 2,489 incidents for every 100,000 people. Our crime rate is 106% higher than the overall crime rate in Florida. Statewide, there were 5,426, 542,116 crimes reported in 2019, or 2,524 for every person, every 100,000 people. We are a lonely planet. Meaning we're the only city in Volusia that does this. One of the reasons that we should do it is so that we're more like other people. Everyone is always saying, why is Daytona outrunning by themselves? So is it worth it? I think that's the big question tonight. Crime stats. Chief Young?
Good evening, Commission, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager. So back when this discussion first came up several months back, what I did was I asked staff to run a report specifically for 52 Zone, which is the zone that encompasses Seabreeze Boulevard. So what I did was I had staff go back three years. So we looked at 2018, 2019, and 2020 specifically for that zone, which is 52 Zone. And the boundaries for the zone are, it starts south. It's at Orr Street to the south, all the way up to Glenview Boulevard, and from Seabreeze Bridge to the beach. So just to give you the box, that, that would be 52 Zone. So in 2020, 30% of the crime in 52 Zone zone occurred between midnight and 4:00 AM, with the highest levels of crime occurring on Saturdays and Sundays. The peak, when, if you look at the maps that I emailed you all, the crime begins to peak at midnight, and then you do see a decline. It's a drastic decline at about 3:00 AM. So even when you compare to 2018 and 2019, and the reason I went back those three years was simply because we all know, you know, COVID hit us in 2020, so we, we look at 2020 as an anomaly. So just to do a comparison to two years prior, it showed the exact same pattern of the peak starts at midnight, and then you see the drastic decline at about 3:00 AM. So it's easy to make the assumption that that is because at 3:00 AM, you have a large contingency of police on that Seabreeze corridor in reference to bar closing.
Chief Young, could you tell me when your shift change is over?
Shift change for day shift is at 5:00 AM. Shift change for day shift is at 5:00 AM and 6:00 AM. For nights, it's 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM, but for daytime, it is 5:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
And how long would it, if they were called into a nightclub or around 2:30, 3:00? I mean, having family that are police officers, how long would it take afterwards if they had to do a report? I mean, when they get off in time?
Right. So typically, um, what we'll do is we'll move, we'll move into the Seabreeze area and we'll establish a traffic pattern. And once the bars let out at 3:00 AM, if it's a very, very busy night, we could be on Seabreeze for about an hour to an hour and a half. So we'll have units basically out of service dealing with bar closing until about 4:30 AM. And then they get off at, well, then we have the new shift, the day shift that comes on at 5:00 AM. But anything during that time period, we end up holding, unless it's a life or death emergency, we'll end up holding those calls while we deal with bar closing, just.
Okay, thank you.
So in effect, it does impact your, a shift?
Yes. It doesn't, it does impact the shift because, um, we end up pulling officers from other zones into that zone in order to deal with or manage the bar crowd. So everybody knows on Saturday, Friday nights and Saturday nights, um, it's up to their shift lieutenant. The shift lieutenant will set the time, whether it's, you know, midnight, 1, 1:00 AM, probably no later than 1:00 AM, we want to start shifting into that area. So, um, the things that I think need to occur in order to improve upon the crime, in my opinion, from my perspective, those things need to occur, whether it's 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM, those things still need to occur. So I think it's no secret that I'm looking at finding a location, uh, for a, um, substation. And I'm looking at a location right there close to the Seabreeze, Seabreeze and, and Grandview area for a substation. And then also, if I can bo, bolster my numbers for staffing, I'll be looking at having, you know, a specific set of officers that can, you know, mainly focus on bar closing so that I don't have to pull resources from other zones in order to manage bar closing.
Do you often have a fire department there also, or evac there, ambulance there on site, or EMTs, anything like that?
Yes.
So there, that department is also?
Yeah, usually what we'll end up doing is we'll end up primarily taking over that Walgreens parking lot across the street from Razzles, and we'll usually station, you, you'll usually see either an ambulance or a fire truck somewhere in the area because unfortunately, nine times out of 10, they're, they're going to be needed at some point. So they just know to come up and station across the street in, uh, the Walgreens parking lot.
Did, I understand you that basically it would be the same thing at 2:00 as it is at 3:00?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, the things that I think need to be done to improve upon the incidence of crime that are occurring, they need to occur regardless. They need to occur whether it's a 2:00 AM bar closing or whether it's a 3:00 AM bar closing. Those things still need to occur.
One of the things I want to make sure that I say is this. We have a police chief, and, and, and the last thing that I want is he, his job is to give us statistics. I don't want him to be in a position where anyone feels as though he's making, uh, giving us advice and, you know, saying that we should be closed or be open. Just give us the facts. The reality is that it's our job.
Our job.
It's our job to give him the tools to be successful. And the bottom line is, he's, not his job to say that I need 3:00 AM or 2:00 AM to be successful. We are the ones to make the policy, and I believe that this policy does not help him to do his job. Bottom line, it does not make his job easier. We have the hardest working police department maybe in America. Okay? One of the sta, uh, statistics that he shared with us in his presentation, I, we all received this. I don't, I didn't mean to interrupt you, though.
No, I'm, okay. I was pretty much.
You were pretty much. Done. Did y'all have any other questions, Ev? Okay, but I, I want to be sure of that, because it's not our job to put him on the stand. I'm, I'm, I'm willing as mayor, thank you, I'm willing as mayor to, to take a stand and to say what I believe is right and to, to go for what I believe will make us a better community. I don't need the chief to be out in that fight. We need him fighting crime. But the folks who are going to fight against this, and I'll go over them in a minute, because they will show up if we decide to do something. But I'm, I'm ready for that. A review of arrests that occurred in 52 Zone between midnight and 4:00 AM indicated that 50%, this is from him, of the defendants were Daytona Beach residents. So half of them that caused a problem down there are from Daytona. They ours, they belong to us, they live here. 18% of the defendants resided in other Volusia County cities. So they'd rather come down here and get drunk and cause a problem than to be in their own city because they can't stay there as late. That's my deduction. 32% of the defendants resided outside of Volusia County. So those are the people who are coming, and they're visiting us. I'm not going to say they're visiting us because it's 3:00. I don't know that. But what I do know is that 3:00 doesn't help anybody but them. Now, what's going to happen? If you guys decide to do something, I can tell you what's going to happen. Let me find my notes. This is what's going to happen. If it comes before us as an item, they will show up. Most of them will be people who own bars. They don't live in Daytona. To remind you all, most of them don't live in Daytona. Now, I respect them because they do employ people who live in Daytona. So they will have the people who work for them, they will show up. And they will say, we can't make a living. We need this extra hour. But what we should do is really look at what it's doing for us. What is it doing for our reputation? At some point in time, we have to say, we believe that our future is better without some things than our current circumstance. Now, what I'm asking is that, once we get a new commissioner, we would bring this back and vote on it. But what I do want you all to remember is that they're going to show up. But most of them don't live here. And they don't have to put up with our reputation. Now, they own businesses and we want to respect that. But at the end of the day, we have a chief, we have a police department, who, this does not help. It does nothing but stretch them. He just told us about the closing time. It stretches them wider and thinner. So the question is, you know, if you all agree, because I, I just want you to vote on it. Of course, I'm going to always make my most convincing argument. But at the end of the day, it's our vote, it's our decision, and we have to have the courage to do what it takes to help our police department and help our reputation, because I think those two things go hand in hand. Um, and so I'm asking for a, all I'm asking for is a vote. I don't think we should vote until whoever that person is is replaced. But I do ask that from you all. Do you agree to that, or, or you, do you not? Not a vote tonight, remember?
Right.
I just, yeah.
I agree we should wait until we have, um, Zone Six, Zone Two, I am Zone Six. Zone Two filled, so that they can have a voice in this decision.
Yeah. And then I would, when I, I would recommend that it not be an immediate thing. It could be six months or even a year. You give the businesses time to know that this is coming. Because you're not, you know, you know, our last thing, we don't want to negatively impact business, but I think at the end of the day, this is going to positively impact our whole city. It's, that's all. It's not, you know, and it's not to get anyone. I believe we're going up. And this is not a part of up. Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, as part of my research, I, I called some people in different places, and I was mailed this. I just wanted to say, you know, what is our reputation in Daytona Beach, and what do people think of us? And this is what was sent back to me. Um, and it's a newspaper article, um, that, you can take a look at the front. It says Daytona Beach making poor decisions. And I had to take a moment and just reflect on kind of what that message was and what image you were trying to send. And that was in the Orlando newspaper.
What was it referring to in regards to?
Take a look at it, and then it's, it's one of those things where you have to take a look at it and.
If you think Daytona Beach is just about, and it has a, a bottle of, uh, you know, someone drinking, poor decisions, you're probably right. Uh, from creative cocktails and elegant wine served at one of the area's fantastic restaurants. Supposed to be a good time. You know, and that's what it's about. Is that?
I'm not sure what it's about. All I know is I just had.
Read it, and I had to take a double take, and I had to stop and say, what is this saying about us, and what image are we reflecting, and what are we getting in other cities? And, um, I just thought I'd share that with you.
Well, and it's from the Visitors Bureau, so maybe they, maybe it's not saying that, but to me.
Yes, P O U R for poor decisions. Making, we're making decisions on pouring after hours.
Oh, winery, so it's not a, it's not poor decision.
But that was my point. It's a play on words that you, that you will or will not get when you read it. It's a play on words. And so I asked some people, I said, you know, what do you think of this, the play on words? And the concept was, it's, it's elegant, you know, it's, it's a play on words. And I read it, and I had to say it a few times to myself, and I thought, if I have to say it a few times to myself, it's kind of like when you leave the house, if you have to question what you're wearing, you might want to change. You know, that's sort of how I looked at it. Um, so that was just, I thought I'd share with you some of the imaging that we have. You know, that's obviously a personal opinion on what you're reading, but I'm just referencing the point that we have images in different places and how people are perceiving us.
Well, I don't like to play on words, but anyway.
Mayor Henry, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to wait till we have a new commissioner.
And your mic?
From now, is, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, since we're going to wait till we have a new commissioner, and maybe even a year from now, and I heard, um, the chief asked, um, he was saying something about a substation. Is there something that we can do to help speed that up for him?
We, we have, um, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we have actually been in discussions, um, looking at how we can acquire or lease that. So that's one of the things that when I first got here, Chief Young took me around and showed me some of the places where he would like to do a substation. So once we are able to, um, negotiate appropriately, um, we will bring something back. The problem we have as an organization is we're the city. So whenever we try to go and lease something, the property owner actually always pushes up the price, and that's what we're, we're working on. But there are two locations in particular that he's looked at, but there is one, um, on, in that area that we're going to try our best to see if we can make, move one of our substations into that location.
And we don't have any property around that area, I don't know.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping some of those new hotel owners on, um, A1A may even try to offer us something.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other questions or comments, or we're in favor of bringing this back for a vote and after we get a new commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I appreciate you all indulging me. I know I can be time consuming. At this time, uh, was that the last agenda item, right?
That was the last agenda item.
Okay.
And we're on to Commissioner's comments.
Permission to comment, who was first? Commissioner Reed?
Yes. Well, I too wanted to, um, I didn't get a chance earlier, but I just wanted to thank Dr. Henry. Is she still here?
No, she has to go pick up her children.
All right. Well, I just wanted to thank her for her, um, sharing her expertise and products with our students. I want to make sure everyone heard that she volunteered her time, and she gave the kids, uh, those, um, math products. I mean, that's what deltas do. Um, I had a conversation with a citizen yesterday that threw a question at me that I'm going to throw at you all. We know that, um, that the pandemic is here and it doesn't look as if it's going anywhere. In fact, the rates are rising. And to kind of give the citizens a little encouragement in using our facilities, would we be interested? I mean, we've, we've given relief on, um, on our water bills, we've given, um, assistance with rental properties. Are we interested in perhaps, uh, halving, uh, the fees on our facilities to encourage people to use them? Was, is that something that we would consider? Reducing our fees for a short period of time?
Well, we don't, we don't, we don't like our fee schedule anyway. We never do like it. But, but.
Reduced.
We, we just, but, but. Yes, you have. It's true.
And I was talking about it before you got here.
So, but, but can you explain just a little bit, what, what do you mean?
Yes, if someone wanted to utilize one of our facilities, particularly with what all is going on. Um, first of all, we're limiting how many people they can even bring, so they can't fully, fully utilize it to an optimal level, because just as we're sitting tonight, you know, we don't have our chambers completely filled. So if someone wanted to use, say, for example, um, Midtown's, uh, multipurpose room, whatever the cost of that room is, would we consider halving, halving the price so that they could still be utilized, but recognizing that it can't be utilized to its full extent because of us having to, um, accommodate provisions for COVID? And just for a period of time, just like we did with the water bill and we did with the permit fees. I mean, we, we can go back and address what they need to be permanently, but just in, in lieu of what's happening now, um, just kind of give us, give a break in regards to that.
Do you want to make it relative to some event, say like funerals or? Or you just want to make anything? Yeah, we have to charge. We're charged for everything.
So we, we could, we could create a list. I mean, um, if we said funerals, if we said weddings, if we said tutorial services, um, nonprofits, you know, I still want to do the MOU for nonprofits or for the Divine Nine because of what they do for the community and being able to use our facilities. Bethune-Cumbin Alumni Association has asked about using for tutorial services. So we could create a list of, of what those services are that would, um, be relevant to and subject to, uh, that reduction.
Okay. I would support that, but I would also s, say that then you listed the things, I think those make sense to me. Are you saying half, or what are you, what's your suggestion in terms of a price, or do you want staff to suggest that?
Well, I'm suggesting 50%.
You're suggesting 50%?
We may need to look at the fees and see if that's, you know, amenable, but when you recognize that they can't even utilize, can't bring everybody they'd like to bring anyway, and then we're still charging them the full amount, is that truly fair?
But I do think they can bring whoever they want. We don't, do we have a limit on that?
No, our, our, our facilities, um, right when I came in, you all made them completely open. Um, and so we're, we're not, um, we are looking at the COVID numbers as they go up now, trying to limit. Um, but I do think that there are, within policy, there may be, um, some savings that are provided to nonprofits, that are provided to certain groups, churches, that I'll have to look at. We will, we will evaluate all of those fees and also bring something back to you all. Um, but I do think that there, there may be some mechanisms in place. If a person is, is getting only allowed to have so many people coming in, we will look at the fees and charges. But based on what I'm hearing, we want to look at all of our fees and charges for our facilities. I, I just want us to always be mindful that whenever we do our fees and charges, allocations towards the staffing levels are, are essential as well. And I do want to make sure that people that utilize our facilities, they are receiving a fair rate. Um, because what we will find is that if we lower our rates, um, we'll have everybody coming, um, to our facilities because they're the lowest in the area. Um, and so we, we'll just have to look at making sure that the residents get a better rate than what outside residents. And so just to, I, I, I don't know what our full rates are, but I want to make sure that, um, when we do it, um, our residents are being the ones that are getting provided.
Yes.
Because you'll have, then the hotels will not have people coming outside. So we'll look at those numbers based on your discussions to, to make sure it's for our residents here. Um, I haven't seen what the rates are, but I will look at them.
Why are you looking at that? Can you also look at our golf course as well? I've had a few complaints about the fees that the residents have to pay. And make sure the rates are. And make sure the rates are, okay.
What was it for Commissioner Cantu? Golf?
Golf.
Yes, golf, yeah. We've had complaints about that as well.
And we have a fee schedule that compares our surrounding cities' rates with ours. Keith did a really wonderful job on that last year, so if you ask him, he can get you that.
Fee schedule.
Yeah, he did a very, very thorough description of what our rates are in comparison to, I think, Ormond, Holly Hill, he did a couple of different cities.
Okay, so.
We'll look at all of them and at, maybe not the next meeting, but maybe in the following, we'll bring a detailed report back, back to you all. But we will be looking at, just want to let you know, we will be looking at the numbers that may go up, and I may be making a recommendation to you all on limiting some of the interactions in some of our facilities if the numbers keep coming up, because I want to protect our staff as well as the residents. Because sometimes residents just will come in, but we will, if we need to close down a facility because of increasing numbers, I'll bring that back to you all before we do that.
And that's understandable. We want the staff and the citizens to be safe.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, so you want to, but we need, we need you all to look at her proposal, which is, I call it a COVID help for facilities.
Yes.
You know.
If somebody, we can, we can create a policy and a document.
And it's just for a time period. It may be, it's not going to be permanent because we'll just call it just helping our residents during COVID, you know. And we'll look at it, just bring it before us, okay?
We'll bring that stuff right back at the next meeting.
Okay.
All righty. I didn't see this on the agenda, and we said that this would be it. Are we not addressing the Bike Week issue for Commissioner Traeger? This was when it was supposed to come back to us.
I understand it's going to be on the next agenda.
Oh, is that what it is?
It'd be on the next agenda. That's not what we said, though. We said this agenda.
Did you meet with staff Commissioner Traeger?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't aware, so.
Okay.
Staff has no comment on why it's not tonight?
Where's Jim?
Did you say, what did you say, Drew? Was it because of L D C change?
The L D C changes are supposed to go inside with the time line.
That's the, that's a different.
No, this is different. This is for Bike, 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 what is it? Bike Oktoberfest?
Oktoberfest.
Yeah.
Yeah, Morris would know more about this than me, but as I understand it, they were trying to bring the L D C changes, which match the changes to the Bike Week master plan together at the same time. And because those have to go to planning board first, it delayed us for one meeting.
This is a different item.
It's a different, but here's Ms. Morris. We, the reason that staff, the staff are not here, they're listening in the back to allow for the residents to have access to the seats. Took you a long walk.
Commissioner, I think that I heard your question about taking care of Ms. Traeger. Is that correct? Okay. Ms. Traeger and Ms. Hurd have both completed their application. You'll see them in a later agenda, so it's.
Hold on. You said two names?
Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Hurd.
It was one name last, two weeks ago.
The item was opened for others to apply by virtue of the motion.
Who already had an application in?
No.
That's not what we said?
I think we guys opened it up for everybody.
That's what we did?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I thought it was for the applications that were already in. So we have two people who missed the deadline.
Yes, ma'am. And they're, they're complete. I've met with both people. They've turned in their checks, they've turned in their plans and so on, so you'll, you will see them in a later date. That was just completed. It's, Traeger brought her money today, I believe. I believe Ms. Hurd brought hers on Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Yes, ma'am.
That concludes my comments.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Traeger?
Yes.
Do you have any comments?
No. I'm sorry to see Mr. Delgado go, but I think we've all had a good experience with him, and I think we've all learned something from him. And I'm delighted that he'll still be involved with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My question was, are we still moving forward with the electronic signs? Because Commissioner Delgado was a driving force with regard to electronic signs and Seabreeze possibly.
Signs on Seabreeze?
I S B A one, are we still doing that or?
But yeah, I, as I said in the paper, the agendas that he has pushed, I'm 100% behind them, and if this commission is behind them, I think they're moving forward, but the manager is already moving on much of that.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Matter of fact, this, this weekend, we were out taking images, pictures of signs in many of our areas, so we'll be bringing some recommendations back to you all to move forward, some of the improvements of signs, based on discussions we, we've all had, but things that he was pushing for Seabreeze and Marquis and things of that nature. We do have some actually, when I was out this weekend, on Main Street, on Seabreeze, even on the pier, and they're just empty that we could put something.
And so, you know, I want to add to that I S B, if that's possible, and kind of include that entire corridor, just as a thought process there, so it's one big swooping area. Next is, I wanted to know, we've kind of addressed the COVID issue. I wanted to know from Commissioner Reed what her thoughts were on the pool event that we were planning on having this weekend. As of right now, I'm coming up with a no, because I don't particularly want to encourage that. I just want to make sure people knew about it and that we're good with it.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Postponed.
Thank you.
I didn't want to say council because I still want to do it for the children.
I do, I do too.
So we told everyone it was postponed.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to give it some public voice.
But because we knew that it had already been shared with the community, the manager is allowing the children to come free.
So they're going to come anyway.
Yeah, you all had already said it would, you were going to do something, so those $2 or $3 is not going to hurt us, so we're going to allow for the kids to come free on behalf of the commission on Saturday to swim at both of our pools.
Okay, all righty. And then this past week, I went ahead and I did have two meetings regarding accessory dwelling units. I did have them. One was in Zone Three, and the other one was the next closest to me, which was Dickson Center. I had participation from the residents, and I walked the neighborhood a little bit, handed out some flyers and encouraged people to attend. They did. I handed out flyers, encouraged people to attend, which they did. They voiced their opinions, and the purpose of the entire process was to let people know what was going on with them. I was grateful that planning was there and they could actually answer questions. Many residents had questions that we had not yet addressed. They brought up some interesting points, and so I'm, I'm thinking that in the near future, we will be hearing from residents and possibly business people, possibly some, you know, rental property owners, et cetera, but I think they will be weighing on, which I think is good. So thank you so much for attending the events. I appreciate it.
That it?
Yep.
And thank you. Commissioner Cantu?
Yeah, I just have one thing, and I'm done, and this is a positive. Jim Morris, can you come up, please? I was told to read this to Jim Morris and all staff with the city that was involved. This is from Terry Gordon, one of our Gold Star Mothers who live in Daytona Beach, and it says, "A quick note to say thank you for helping us with One Flag Pool. Please know we are very grateful and so happy to have a permanent place to honor Brandon's service and sacrifice. It means so very much to our family. Thank you and God bless, Jean and Terry Gordon."
Thank you, Commissioner.
And so, it's my thank you.
Good job.
Commissioner Cantu, will you talk about the ceremony on Friday?
That's the mayor.
Oh, okay. I got it. I forgot. He did tell me. Commissioner Henry?
Just two quick things, and that is, one, at our Neighborhood Watch, Zone Five Neighborhood Watch, we had a very great presentation from the mosquito control. As you all know, I don't know if it's, if they're as pesky in your area as they are in Zone Five, but they came and gave a great presentation about how they're handling the mosquito issue right now. And I think it would be a great idea if they came and kind of just gave a quick, brief, brief summary of how they're doing, because things have changed in how they're addressing the issue. I know before it was, we were just used to seeing them come out, and they don't do that anymore. Now they have to come out and actually, before they even come out, they, they come out and do lots of testing. So it's not like the run of the mill that it used to be, where they always came out. So I think it would be a great idea because perhaps some other zones are experiencing some of the issues that we're experiencing in our community. Also, a couple months ago, the company that I talked about HIV and AIDS being on the rise in Daytona Beach, I talked about that, and because of COVID, the company that wanted to come out and speak about that did not get to come out and speak. So I do want them to be able to come out and be able to give their presentation, because as I told you a couple months ago, from what the doctors were saying to me that worked for this particular company, it is henny penny kind of, the sky is kind of falling because people are not getting tested. It is kind of going to the back burner, and people don't think about HIV and AIDS anymore in that way, because treatment has become so revolutionary now that it's not like it was just even five, 10 years ago. So I still would like for that company to come out and talk about the crisis that Daytona Beach is experiencing, especially in the 32114 and 32117 areas, which is where the biggest crises is right now. I still want them to come out and do that presentation to us and talk about how the city can partner with their organization to help with education, treatment, and even education of younger people, because the highest numbers that are, the highest numbers right now are numbers from older teenagers to younger adults. They're seeing an uptick in high school teenagers with, with HIV. So I definitely would like to make sure that that company still gets to come out and give us a presentation about how HIV is affecting Daytona Beach.
What's the name of the company?
I'll get you the information.
Okay.
I don't remember the name, but I'll, she emailed me and asked if, when would be a good time for them to, for the doctors to reschedule, and they're going to bring the doctors in, and the doctors are going to talk about the crisis in our community. Daytona Beach offered, for the first time, a youth beach safety camp, which was just the most amazing camp. It really is like a junior lifeguard camp, but it was very in-depth, very detailed. My, my son attended the camp. I try to support anything that the city of Daytona Beach does for youth. I try to make sure that I know what I'm talking about, so I make sure that my children are participating. But he has, he said that out of all the camps that he has ever been to, and he's been going to them for a long time, this was the best camp he's ever experienced. They're on surfboard, they're out in the ocean, learning how to save people, and our lifeguards are out there teaching them how to save people, they're teaching them CPR. It is actually an article in our little news thing that talks about it was going to be underway, but it has been the most, they have done a really good job in planning this camp out, and I would really like to see more of this. You know, drowning is the number one cause of deaths for children under two in Florida and children under six in Florida. So, and there are some other age groups, I don't know the other ones, but I do know it's under two and under six. It's the number one cause of death for, for those age groups. So I would like to see, I know the mayor talked about more swimming initiatives, I'd like to see more water, actual water safety initiatives like this in the city of Daytona Beach. So well, well done to staff. Terry Johnson, who's over the pool, he orchestrated this, and he actually got more African American children out, who sometimes that is the number one cause of, drowning is the number one cause of death for almost every age group in youth, for African American children, because they don't get water safety, they don't get swimming lessons. So I would definitely like to just see more of that as we move forward. And those are my comments.
I, I agree. Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to add, Commissioner Henry reminded me of something. The Zone Six Neighborhood Watch meetings will begin again on next Monday on the ninth. Mr. Miller is here, he has taken the charge to be the lead of that, that initiative, and I thank him for that, because we, we were ready to move. And so we'll be meeting at 6:30 at Midtown on next Monday at the ninth, on the ninth.
And I'm going to remind everyone that our Zone Five person is here as well, Malcolm, and he's going to be getting some things started with the Santa Runs. So if you all are interested in Santa Runs, Zone Five is going to be doing Santa Runs. So I'm telling you early, so if you'd like to participate and you like, that's something you're interested in for your zone. I know Chief is going to, this year, they're going to help make it a really big deal for Daytona Beach. They're going to do a lot of route planning, throw in some extra things. And last Santa, year Santa Run was amazing. So if you're interested in doing a Santa Run for your, especially during COVID, because we, I think we'll still be, COVID will still be an issue in December.
Looks that way.
And he'll talk to you more probably when it gets up. Thank you.
Thank you. First thing I want to say is congratulations to staff. You're doing a great job, the staff of Daytona Beach. Commissioner Henry talked about the swimming initiative. I don't, I think it was about eight, nine months ago that then-city manager and I, Jim Morris, started talking about several types of things that we could do to enhance our swimming program. And this is a part of that, as he and I discussed a little while ago, Keith Willis and his staff. This is just a beautiful thing. And they also have another initiative that Mr. Johnson shared with me from six to seven that will take those young people who have been swimming and make them more proficient on Wednesdays and Fridays. And like Commissioner Henry, I had both of my children involved in that program, and I'm going to get them on this Wednesday, Friday circuit, so that the ultimate plan is that they will graduate then into this type of program, and ultimately, we want to see some lifeguards come out of this type of program. And that's, that's really the ultimate goal, because if they can, if they can become lifeguards, then they will be able to get their other little buddies and other little kids in the neighborhood to be lifeguards. So that's really what we want to see, but you guys are doing a great, great job on a number of fronts. I mean, just executing things that I see this commission talk about. We talked about the poopy water issue and having a class executed, you know. I wasn't in the class, but I've heard that it was, you know, it was good. And this is what we want to do. We just want to be a greater, better city. Everything that we touch, we want it to be excellent. And to that end, Friday, August 6th, will be Purple Heart Day 2021 at 11:00 a.m. here on the steps of City Hall. We will, I'm very thankful, you know, we all find our niches, and Commissioner Cantu is excellent at helping us to celebrate, and I think that's an important part of any city. You want to celebrate each other, you want to celebrate the things that are going on in your city, and I can think of no better folks to celebrate than folks in the military. And so at 11:00, we will have this special celebration and a special, special presentation that I will announce at that time. Will be a part of this presentation as well as a proclamation. Senator Wright will be there, as well as Councilman Wheeler. So please join us at 11 o'clock on Friday. I would be remiss if I didn't ask one last person to come up. You know, I'm the mayor with a million ideas these days, as the staff probably will tell But I don't, I don't, I don't give them an idea that I don't work with them on. I'm a working, I'm a working mayor. I believe in working on these ideas and bringing them, help bring them to life. You know, they call me, I'm going to try to answer and try to help guide them along. But during, earlier tonight during the presentation, you know, I was really, really, the reason I did that presentation was really because of the young lady. She inspired us, and so I just wanted everyone to see the whole. I just wanted everyone to see the whole presentation. But I wouldn't get half of anything done if it wasn't for one staff person who's not going to be with us much longer. This, this week, we have the COVID-19 vaccination clinics. The Family Health Source will cover those for us. Went from $25 to $50 per shot. We will be offering the Moderna shot on August 10th, August 11th, and August 12th. So that wouldn't happen without Ms. Goodman. The boot camp wouldn't happen without Ms. Goodman. Pretty much nothing that I do as mayor. Mayor's Fitness Challenge, Mayor's Literacy, all of the literacy, the reading programs, none of it would happen. Citizens Academy. And so I could go on and on, but I, I dare not let this evening pass without saying that, that the boot camp, it was, it was a remarkable success. But the children received these as a part of their graduation thing. Now, the first one came back and it was, it was wrong. It had some sort of arrow on it. But she caught it. I would never have caught it, but she caught it just like that. Everything that she touches, it looks good. The city looks good because she's, she's an excellent professional in all things that she does. The students also received, because of, in part because of staff, gift certificates to hang of 15. I just can't say enough about what you do to make our city great and to make these type of projects just roll on. And staff knows that if it's not excellent, they have to come again. So, thank you. Sincerely.
And Thatcher's waiting for his birthday.
What? Is her birthday?
No, her birthday's in January. She's a Delta.
Yeah, she's a Delta.
We're talking about Thatcher. He reminds her all the time that his birthday is coming up.
Okay.
He threatened us if we don't do something for his birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll, we'll celebrate you. That concludes my comments. Mr. Manager?
No, yes, as you stated, I will say that I'm enjoying working here, and we do have some great staff members here that's going to help us to move your agendas forward. And Betty is one of those. She, she makes it very clear to me that she's not going to be here long. So when I challenge and say I'm going to terminate you, she says, okay. So, thanks, thanks.
Oh, yeah. So many staff. Louis, wherever you are, Louis Magnificent, and Susan Sabone, all these things. Okay. Mr. Attorney?
No comments. Thank you.
All right. We'll hear from our residents at this time. The gavel is not to be placed at gavel, Jim.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 13, which is our public comment forum. Our first speaker is Thomas Caffrey, and on deck is Candace Wrightzell.
Commissioner, hi, I'm Thomas Caffrey. Appreciate you guys hearing me, mayor, everybody, attorney, all, Mr. Manager. So I learned a neat thing tonight, yellow sheets and green sheets. So that's, that's kind of fun for me. With that being said, wanted to talk briefly about my history in Daytona Beach. So I, I grew up here. I, I used to walk to Bonner Elementary. I went to Bonner Elementary. I'm a, a local business owner. I do not live in the city. But with that being said, I really support this city. I own a lot of property here. I think this city is amazing. I think everything about it is fantastic. I don't like the idea of closing bars at 3:00. My bar that I own on Main Street closes very early. Doesn't really affect me the normal parts of the year. The parts of the year that it will affect me is Bike Week, Biketoberfest, Jeep Beach, July 4th, New Year's Eve, things like that. We talk about statistics, 12:00 to 4:00. Well, if we're talking about 3:00 in the morning, let's talk about 2:00 to 4:00. Let's talk about that, but not 12:00 to 4:00. Main Street doesn't have the problems that Seabreeze has. We don't have those issues. We, we don't feel those issues. It's not a part of our micromanagement. I think, I think it's important that we look at that as a city issue, and that's okay. There's nothing wrong with that. I think that, that these issues that are brought up are important. I think that they need to be talked about. But I don't think they need to be changed. I think we've been doing it a really, really long time, and I think we need to just keep it the same way. I grew up here. I didn't drive to Daytona because it had an extra hour of drinking. It just didn't happen. I wasn't doing it. Didn't make any sense to me. I, I think that, that as a business owner here locally, it's a struggle every day, all day to get locals on Main Street to come to Main Street. I think those are things that we should be focusing on. I think that we need to focus on those issues. I think Seabreeze doesn't have that problem. I think Seabreeze has a lot of local businesses that are there. They've been successful for a very long time, and they continue to be successful. But I think Main Street literally has no reason to go to it other than the biker events. We have many ultimate businesses that are closed. They're not open. There's vacant storefronts, and it's just because the same property owners own all the same buildings. And they're literally just vacant. We bought our building back in 2018, and I say we, I've, I've got two partners now. It's actually, it's six partners because we're all couples. But, but literally, we started out as two of us. We never planned on moving into the building. We planned on renting it out and doing itinerant vending like everybody else does on Main Street because that's profitable. I did, because of my love for the community, my partner's love for art, that we wanted to start an art studio. Oh, sorry. But anyway, to be continued.
That's all I can do. I'm Candace Wrightzell. I live at 211 Williams Avenue. I want to thank you for listening to me this evening. The reason I'm here is to request to be added to next month's city commission agenda. I would like to appeal a city staff decision made by code enforcement regarding case numbers. If you want the numbers, I can give them to you. It's 20200375 and CE20202497. This is regarding the lack of setbacks and number of structures on the property. Code enforcement is not enforcing the municipal development code regarding this property. We have contacted Commissioner Delgado, the city manager and city attorney, and via emails regarding this matter with little or no response to phone calls and emails. So I do not know from here how to apply for the appeal. I would like to be heard on the matter, and I thank you for your time. The address of the property is 215 Williams Avenue. Pardon? B-side, yes, sir.
What is, can you tell us anything about this matter?
Is this the property, you're adjacent to the property with the old chicken coop?
With the chicken coop.
But there's no chickens in it currently. So staff has looked at that and made a determination that there was no code violation. So that's the current status.
That's what I would like to appeal.
Is that something that can be appealed if there's no violation? I don't.
It's not a staff opinion that, it's not the type of staff opinion that is appealable. And it's not a matter that's gone to the magistrate to be appealed either. So.
But, but if the setbacks are not being applied, if vegetation or landscaping is more than four foot high, and ergo a chicken coop with chicken wire all around it with a door, a roof structure, it's not a flower box.
All I can tell you, ma'am, and to this commission is that I've been informed by code that they've looked at the site and determined that there is no code violations.
I was told that I could appeal it.
Okay.
So, and I was told I appeal it to you, so.
Right. Yeah, your appeal does not come to this board. And again, it's not a land use decision. Those types of opinions are appealable from staff.
But who do I appeal to then?
And, and here's the thing. It sounds as though you are asking for something in relationship to your neighbor's property.
Yes, sir.
So it's not something that you really have a right to appeal because you have not been, you, you may feel violated, but it, and you rescue me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right on target.
But you haven't been violated. The only person that could appeal the decision is the property owner.
Okay. But they wouldn't appeal a decision because it's on their behalf that they're not complying with setbacks and. So now it goes to court then? I would have to go to court?
You, you may go to court if you have some private rights you'd like to enforce against them. If it's a nuisance or some other matter, you know, you would have a civil remedy in that case.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Not sorry.
Our next speaker is Malcolm Williams, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Good evening, everybody. I'm just shocked that was for John. Malcolm Williams, 1006 Libby Avenue, Zone 5. Just want the commission to know that Zone 5 does house some of the schools that we talked about earlier, fell in schools. And what we're asking for is some open doors that the community can get involved. We're looking right now to try to do a kind of a pep rally or some encouragement type things that we can do to get these kids excited. We are not impressed with those grades, to say the least, but we do want to get involved. We're looking for some city-community partnership that we can go in there and do a lot of different things. You know, some of the things we were questioning is with the COVID funds, if we can bring in some top-notch speakers to do some pep rallies, some motivational seminars, things of that way, to get these kids excited. We do have some backpack giveaways going on in our Zone 2 this Saturday at Derbyshire Place and at Living Faith World Ministries from 9:00 to 12:00. We are inviting everybody to come out and encourage these kids. Got some time left. Y'all already know my feelings on the closing of the bars. I think I'm the only one in here that's out there every weekend. It's not as bad as it sounds, even though the statistics are not that alarming. But I would ask that you guys really have some real conversations with the citizens when you come to the closing of 2:00 bar closing. And one of the things I will leave you with, let's say if you work the night shift or the third shift, you're not getting off till 12:00. By the time you get home, it's 1:00. By the time you get to the club, it's 1:30. You got 30 minutes. We don't have a lot of things in this city to enjoy or relax and do all of those things. So I guarantee you, looking at it that way, it will be as if it's threatening to the citizens that actually work here. We won't, we don't have a lot to do on Seabreeze. You know, it is the entertainment district. What we are asking is for some comprehensive plans. We do understand the police department is a little strained, especially when it comes to resources, but if we can put some traffic for plans that are consistent. Every week, it's not the same. One week, police are out there, next week, they're not. It may be a traffic plan this time, it's not the next time. We're looking for something to actually involve the community, offer some vendors to do, you know, hot dog stands, sausage stands, something that makes it seem as if this community is all on the same page all the time. So that's what we're asking for, open doors and open conversations on those matters. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Natasha Azari.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. A couple of items. One, Ruth, on 10D, you were talking about 11 years is a long time. In the Main Street CRA, we have one property that's been 30 years undeveloped on the same thing. And we have one on Main Street that's been over 25 years that we've been waiting. All right? So it does go on B-side a lot.
Approved for PDs or?
Mm-hmm. Yep. And we're still waiting.
When are they supposed to?
I'm going to add a time. I'll talk to you.
Sorry.
All right. Two, A1A, we're still waiting. It's been 25 years since we did the landscaping on A1A. We left eight poles right in front of the Hard Rock Cafe, the old blue poles, the third rendition that we remodeled A1A. They're still there. It'd be nice if we could match the rest of A1A. Also, we redid the lampshades on A1A, and we left six of them in front of the new plaza. If we could replace those. There are a lot of little things that could be done. Zone changes are coming up. That's why I would have preferred to Aaron Delgado's seat be left vacant and just appoint someone. But zones are coming up, and when you have somebody in, in the zone, it makes it difficult to rig the zones. Third, schools. You talked about the math program. Years ago, I, with Scarlet Golden, I tried to do a reading program in our recreation. The school system has half-day reading teachers, so our schools would get a half a day of reading. So my suggestion was that the city hire reading teachers for their recreation programs. So instead of teaching basketball or football or whatever, they taught reading as well, which we did in Miami. And that died. That there was no need for any reading programs in Midtown at all. Lastly, Mayor, on your brochure, you, your brochure said $30 million was spent in downtown. And I, my comment was, there were several things that were added, which is the $5 million for North Beach Street, the million and a half here, the million dollars there. I did not mention the money for Magnolia. I did not mention the Sweetheart Trail, which would have brought it up to 40 million. I did not mention the property, this city property of the $26 million, which would have brought to $65 million spent on city property downtown. Don't shake your head, Mayor. 30 plus 10 plus 26 is 65 million. Trust me, I taught math. So yes, we need money spent on B-side. And you were talking all of these things about B-side. One of the reasons why B-side has not progressed, we made bad decisions. We closed the model of the beach. We closed Main Street, the most busy intersection on the beach. We spent no money on the B-side. We need to get up our game on the B-side.
Our next speaker is Natasha Azari, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
$65 million, he says we spent out. 40 to 65 million.
Hi. Thank you all for the opportunity to have me here and be able to talk about what I've been wanting to present, which is I want, I would like to inform you all about a nonprofit organization that I recently started called Save the Arts Movement. And
Tell us what's going on.
Okay. So I'm very passionate about the, the arts. And I've been hearing about what you guys want to do as far as improving the district and bringing in the arts with murals. So with the nonprofit that I had started a few months ago, I have done some work with collaborations with other artists. And I'd like to tell you what the nonprofit is based on. So Save the Arts Movement is a 501(c)(3) that advances to beautify the public, community, and businesses in local areas and abroad with murals while working with independent artists, business owners, organizations, and local government. We specialize in mural and street art to create productive connections between organizations and the communities we serve. We collaborate with some of the best professional artists to create eye-catching experiences with vibrant and colorful public murals, which can enhance improvement to the daily lives of residents and local businesses. Our mission is to create and facilitate public murals throughout the community while providing platforms for all types of artists to showcase their work, educating the public about the importance and economic impact of the arts, while raising funds and mural supplies for several projects around places that would otherwise not be able to afford it. Hope to inform people about the impactful values through collaboration and inspiration. So.
So what's on the?
So a visual board of the work that we have done in the past, since March. And I'd like to lay this open to where everyone can see it, but I guess it would be. And I'd like to lay this open to where everyone can see it, but I guess it would be if I put it on this...
Okay, wait a minute.
So much.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll do this here.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thanks, Tom.
There's a piece of paper right there that's a little loose right there. So much. So here's the project so far that we have transpired in the community of Volusia. This is in the city of Holly Hill, where we had our first mural launched. And it has attracted residents and created vibrancy in the area. And I noticed the interaction during the process in this has just brought so much excitement. Done this one right here on Seabreeze Boulevard as well, so...
Mayor, do you want...?
All right, your time is up, but I think that we will, we will have opportunities
Okay.
for you, you know, in our community, because this is something that we discussed earlier. And the commission seems to be embracing
Okay.
the arts, and we want you to be a part of the process.
Absolutely. I'm gonna put my cards right here. Thank you.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's great.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Nancy, I believe it's Wabi.
Yes, Frederick Brown, 1501 Chris Ridge, Daytona Beach. I want to preface my remarks, a couple of things I want to thank. And Mayor Henry, I think you said it pretty eloquently, but I really want to thank the Utilities Department, Director Ponitz, and Manager Cook. Did an outstanding presentation opportunity at the Reclamation Water Project that they have out there. Truly an outstanding project. It's a shame that it's only a test project. I would certainly like to see the city support that in the future. You have a decision to make on that. I think it's a great project. And the staff did an excellent job. And I will say this much, getting to know your staff well that day. They were very open, answered all the questions. I think they helped turn some heads around people that didn't know much about it. But I was also dismayed that none of the commissioners had been there, so... I encourage you all to get involved, to understand what's going on out there, and you have an outstanding staff. Three minutes is not much time, so I'm gonna cover this very quickly. And I do want to say that as an education professional, my wife is a retired education professional, those scores are horrifying. And I think it's more important that you focus on getting those grades up than worrying about that hour at the bars, okay? That's not, I mean, Daytona is what Daytona is. I live only a few blocks from Commissioner Trager. I'd rather see him stay at the bars drinking than running around the streets drinking. We have a little bit of that. But I think it's very important to focus on the schools. And as a person who volunteered a lot of my time and raised two children who have a combined number of six college degrees, I will say this, parental involvement is the key to success in getting your schools to As. No question about that. And, you know, you have an excellent example of a citizen here who volunteered at time. I used to do it myself also with troubled kids in disadvantaged neighborhoods. And the biggest thing I saw in their faces was the fact that their parents just did not get involved. So I encourage the mayor to pursue getting parental involvement in this as well. Now, that takes away from the rest of the thing I wanted to talk about, which, again, let's talk about what Daytona is famous for. And I would like to say that giving away public land is wrong. Now, you were all sent a letter, okay, all the commissioners, and I provided a copy of the main three pages. There were some 71 pages, including documentation and support, showing that the actions taken last May, where you gave away the only piece of property for beachside access in my zone, only piece was given away, and it was done incorrectly. I think Sarah Metz wrote this letter. She's an attorney. I think she spelled out the legal arguments pretty clearly. There are additional legal arguments regarding the state, which I tried to send to Commissioner May, who also took an interest.
I personally can't accept the idea that Daytona is what Daytona is. We gotta be better than what we are, and so I just...
I may clarify, I'm referring to it as a tourist town. It is a tourist town.
It is that. Your time is up. Your time's up.
Mr. Mayor, we are not a monolithic commission. I think we could do more than one thing at a time. We can walk and chew gum, so we can, we can be diverse and tackle various issues, which is what we've done in the past for many years now.
Yeah, not just, yeah, I agree. Ms. Wabi? I agree.
Hi, my name's Nancy Wabi, and I am also the semi-president of the Volusia Property Owners Association. I've been trying to retire for like three years. So I'm here to address this ADU initiative that's coming out to have rental properties in single-family zones. And I've talked to a lot of different landlords and different people in the different zones and just normal, you know, household people that do not know anything about this thing happening. And I'm here to encourage that, as Commissioner May had a couple meetings out in Zone 3 and 6, that in, that we have other meetings and do some more advertising before we make a decision, all the commissioners, as to opening up our single-family zoning area to be able to have rental property on it. We went through the beachside years ago and took away a lot of the buildings and the rental properties, diminished the size of houses that were hacked up over the years. And we got good code enforcement going. Our code enforcement is doing a great job. They're just overworked. So I would say, why don't we look at the problems that we already have instead of bringing more work and find all the people that are illegally renting out homes and apartments and garage apartments and get them to comply or close down before we start taking our single-family areas into new rentals. I chose to live on the beachside on Peninsula Drive. I didn't go to Port Orange in a little teeny community with houses crammed together. And now, if my neighbor had the opportunity, he could have an apartment right next to me. And that isn't why I bought into a single-family zone. So, and then the other thing, I have some ideas about the low, the Section 8 vouchers and having landlords have to commit to renting to Section 8 when I think Section 8 needs to revamp their system, and we need to look at some of that. And I'll be talking to HUD again about that, because I don't rent to Section 8 anymore. I've done it. I've tried it. I keep having one problem after another. So, and then a lot of people don't meet my criteria, which is no criminals for the last five years, no violent misdemeanors, and no evictions. So if you... I... Thank you for talking to me or listening to me.
Our next speaker is Joanne King, and on deck is Krista Goodrich.
Hello, I'm Joanne King, and it's 507 Jessamine Boulevard. And I want to talk to you about the accessory buildings. I personally have a historic home, and I have an accessory building. That is legal, and it does have an inspection. I recently went and visited somebody on my street that was in an illegal backroom apartment, and it was really disgusting. And I really was so happy that you decided to address this issue so that these backyard rentals could be brought forward and be inspected and be a little bit better than what they are. Because on beachside, everywhere you look, there's an apartment someplace on the properties, okay? And these people are renting them illegal. So if they're able to come forward and get legal renters, I think that it would be a whole lot better. As far as your bar closing, I don't think it's gonna help anything. I'm from the Jersey Shore. We tried it. It didn't work. They just lingered around longer. They were drunk, and they were just walking around the streets. And your crosswalk by the Hard Rock, it does not stop traffic. Twice, I almost had kids hit. And that's all I got for you. Have a good day.
Our next speaker is Krista Goodrich, and on deck is Destiny Williams.
Hi, everyone. I'm Krista Goodrich, and I didn't realize Erin resigned, but I was in Zone 2, and that would have been so much fun to have me up there with you guys. Anyway, that being said, it would have been a chaos, but anyway. The swimming stuff, I thought that was amazing, and I will say I appreciate you addressing the discrepancy in African-American people and white people and our background in swimming. You don't see African-Americans on this Olympic swim team. You don't see African-American lifeguards, and it's a problem. And I think it's great that you're actually bringing it up, because it is something that bothers me, being a boater and swimmer. So I thought it was really cool. ADUs, I'm a fan of. I believe that, just like Joanne said, there's so many of these backyard, under-the-cover, under-the-radar people renting, that if you bring it to the forefront, then you're gonna be able to license it, regulate it, and make it more acceptable. It's already happening. It is a problem. And the lady that just spoke said it already is a problem. She said, "Let's address our current problem," so we're addressing it. I do appreciate that we're actually having these hard conversations. And then as far as not allowing Section 8 and stuff, that's actually a fair housing issue, that you can't do that, but that's okay. Anyway, so I also wanted to say I'm super excited about what this young lady had to say about the arts. I know there's a lot of movement going on in that right now. You guys all, most of you have talked to me at some point about it. And it's a fantastic initiative. I hope you guys stay rocking and rolling with it. There are so many people very, very motivated right now to do this, so don't lose the momentum. We're going into fall. There's some initiatives that we can help the high school students to build up their resumes, which they're gonna need for their college applications. If we wait too long, we're gonna miss that opportunity. So just keep on rocking and rolling with that. Keep doing a good job. That's all I have.
Oh.
Oh, a few moments. Keep the bars open.
You knew that. It's like you forgot something.
Our next speaker is Destiny Williams, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
I think I'll keep it on, the nervousness. Destiny Williams, 809 Cottle Circle North, Daytona Beach. I did want to add, there is an African-American on the Olympic team. And when I went to the beach the other day, there was an African-American lifeguard, which was very nice to see. Going back to what you said, Mayor, about the kids needing the positive environment in terms of schooling is what you were referring to, but I would like to say also in terms of their environment, period. Their living conditions where they're living. This past weekend, we took a walk on the Ave to try to talk to the business owners, trying to get people to be more involved with coming to certain meetings and voicing their opinions and things. It was very disappointing to see a lot of the businesses are abandoned, blacked-out windows, brown bags over the windows. It's right next to the Great Bethune Cookman, you know, and you look down the street and you see these things. You could see haystacks rolling down the road. It's very discouraging for the citizens in that area, and I'm sure probably for the students, because, you know, who wants to live kind of like that? But I'm excited to hear that Zone 6 is having neighborhood watch meetings. I emailed Commissioner Reed this past week about a few things that I had concern about in our neighborhood. And I don't know if y'all maybe fixed the speed bump, because the speed bump going down Lockhart was completely torn up. But tonight, I rode by, and it was fixed, so that was good to see. And that goes, again, with the positive environment. Seeing those fixings in our neighborhoods, it encourage, it's good for the kids to see, you know, that they're cared about and... Because we see a lot of abandoned businesses and buildings around Daytona Beach, and it's just disheartening. I have to take my kids out of state and show them this is possibilities, you know what I mean? And I don't want to have to do that, because my family grew up here. But yeah, excited for the neighborhood watch meetings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming up, sharing.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Sharon Hawkins.
When she's coming, I just want to share with Brittany that, Brittany? Destiny? Destiny, I just want to share with you that the city manager is going on zone tours with every commissioner. And as I stated in my reply to you, we had our tour last week, and there are several things that we are going to be addressing as a result of that tour, okay? And thank you for coming.
Zone 6. I just want to talk about the city manager and thank him for getting us back in the meeting after our rights had been taken away from us for so long, and we had to speak after, and he did a good job in putting us back in the meeting, and I beg him for it. I want to talk about the streets that need to be paved in my zone. There's plenty of them. There's not enough time to list them all. But my street, Key Street, Live Oak, is all bumpy and cracked up, big holes in it. Wallis Street, at 550, the house, they started tearing it down, and they didn't finish it. There's trash and furniture that's been sitting out there for four months. And this is Zone 6, misery zone. This stuff need to have some attention. You go all the way down this street. They did come there, a couple yards, but the street, the trash that's in front of that house, 550, Wallis Street is in deplorable condition. They started, then they stopped. Then they're going on now for four months with, or longer with the trash. You need to send somebody out there to pick up that trash. It's a big eyesore, and it makes the whole street and the community to look bad. So I also would like to address an incident that occurred at the last city commission meeting. You said that these staff is doing a good job. Some of them are, a lot of them not. Some of them are rude and very unprofessional. Some of your clerks are telling people where to sit, what to do. This is not part of their job, Kay Brown and Jim Gasson. At the last city commission meeting, I had a big problem. I came in. Yvette Presley is standing there. They said you couldn't see me, so I went back to the second row, and she's standing there blocking. Come up here, send me here, but a little boy is sitting there. And so they're trying to block me from sitting in a seat, and I'm a taxpayer homeowner for over 54 years, paying thousands of dollars in taxes, and my rights was violated. And I have a cause concern that they were violated. There was a hostile, rude, discriminatory environment that took place here. And the policeman came up after they told lies about me sitting, and a little kid slapped. They told lies and had them come over and harass me. So then a person that's running for city commission for Zone 2 called the police chief and told him that he witnessed the whole situation and that that had never happened. Then you have one of your clerks running around, "Oh, she was rude to a little kid. Told me to shut up." And Yvette Presley brought him in here, and they should not be telling people where to sit in City Hall. That is not part of her job. We've been coming in here for years, and we've never had this type of behavior. It needs to stop. Service is the price you pay for the space you occupy. That's your rudeness.
Ms. Johnson, what was that address with the trash? 550?
Plus 550, plus they didn't finish tearing the house down. They started, they took part of it down.
I'm sorry, I still can't understand the street. 550?
I say the address of the house is 550. It's down there past Gerald Chester's, two apartments on the same side.
So it's on MLK?
No, it's on Wallis.
On Wallis, that's what I needed.
Right next to the Daytona Times.
Okay.
And while she go down there, the whole street has trash. These rivers live down there.
Our next speaker is Sharon Hawkins, and on deck is Sandra Murphy.
Hello.
Hawkins, I'm a business owner all over Daytona. My first subject is, I am glad to hear that someone has nightlife in MLK, Zone 6, Zone 5, no light, no nightlife. We need to rezone so we can bring something in our community. When I say ours, the Black community, the redevelopment community. So I'm still waiting on zoning. The other thing is, I'm here about the grants. I appreciate them. I used them for my building on MLK. But we have an issue. And let me give you an example. I did some stucco, I painted, I put new awnings. You drive by 202 Dr. Martha King, it's nice. The permit cost me $68. The job cost me $700. You told me I had to have a contractor to pull the permit. I was charged $1,500. And the only way I could get this money from the city is that I had to have a contractor. Now, I'm not sure how they're supposed to go, but it's very discour... It makes you not even want to be bothered with the city. I need, I'm asking to you guys to overlook that, because something is wrong. I'm paying more to get a contractor than the permit and the job itself. I did talk to Mr. Drew about that. I brought it to his attention, and I'm still waiting on some feedback. If you want people to make their areas better, their buildings, you must... If you want people to make their areas better, their buildings, you must, it's not an incentive. It's actually made to discourage them. I'm actually not even, I'm thinking, if it doesn't change, I'll just do things on my own. I don't need to go to the city for the money because it's not worth it. I'm losing. Do y'all understand what I'm saying? So please overlook those grants. I mean, I'm glad you have them, but the 50/50 is not working because I'm losing money. And I lost a lot of money off this project. $768 permit, that's all it cost my contractor to pull. But I was charged $1,500. And my job was only $700. Yeah, that's crazy. So, say it again? So please overlook that for me. I appreciate it. And work on the zoning for Zone 6 and 5 for us, please. Thank you.
Well, you have to have a specific zoning request. There's something that you want changed. I mean, and that's something we can talk about offline, but you gotta know. You can't just say, change the zoning.
Was the lighting? Was it the light? You mentioned lighting.
No, no, no. Just about zoning, where we're in our community, we're so zoned out of having, you can't have this, you can't have that. Listing meetings that you consider rezoning so we can bring something in our community. I shouldn't have to go on the B-side just to go to a club for my, you understand?
I understand that, but we have rezoned and, you know, he says he's looking at it. Just saying.
Yeah, we'll be bringing something back.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Sandy Murphy and on deck is Steve Miller.
Good evening. Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I went to both of the ADU meetings that Commissioner May organized this week. And I have to say that the staff did a very nice job of putting a presentation together and giving people an idea of what ADUs are. Despite that, I think there are a lot of people who still have in their minds something that ADUs are not, as what we're trying to do. They're not something that's been a secret. We've been talking about this at the commission level for a good eight months, if not more. They're not something that means to go back to the bad old days of having seven apartments in one building and have it all chopped up. It's not about short-term rentals. These are all long-term rentals. It's not about dorm living. We do have a definition of what a family is that is very flexible. But we're also governed by the laws of the state that say you can only put but so many people in so much space. And so we're not asking to pile people into tiny buildings in the backyard. One thing that many people brought up as a problem, though, I think is something worth looking at on a citywide level, and that is parking. That was a consistent issue that people brought up, not just with the ADUs. But my experience now is that parking is, you know, on the lawns. My experience now is that there are 17 cars in the driveway. If we could find a way to fund a traffic officer who could focus on parking violations, I think that would improve the neighborhoods and give people a lot of satisfaction about seeing changes in their neighborhood. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that the Josie Rogers house was moved for the Riverfront Esplanade Project. It is sitting over by the Main Street Bridge. The blinds have now disintegrated in the sunlight. So whatever's inside will be disintegrating in the sunlight next. Josie Rogers was a very important woman. She was a woman way ahead of her time. She was our first mayor. Her property that is her historic remembrance deserves a lot more attention and care than that. And I would like to see something happen with that soon. Have a plan for what we're going to do with it. We took Echo money to redo it. We should make use of it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve Miller and on deck is Patricia Hurd.
While she's coming, I would say that she's right about that house. We cannot allow what happened to, the armory or the wreck, to happen to that house. Benign, well, it wouldn't be benign. It would be asinine neglect. So we don't want that to happen.
Mr. Mayor, just to state, me and Joe Yarborough, who's overseeing the Esplanade Park, we visited the house on last week to determine our next step. And we will be working more with our grant writer to see how we can utilize that property if you all desire. So we did that last week. I took a tour.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Miller?
My name is Steve Miller, 383 Walnut Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. And I'd like to start by saying I truly love Daytona Beach and I know you guys do too. And I see so much progress and so many folks who are excited about our new city manager and the things that you guys are doing. And keep it up. And of course, I always love talking to the mothers of the city of Daytona Beach. And man, I don't know who running for this zone here, but we might have six fee bills on the commission. I don't know. Mr. Mayor, you got a lot of women around you, so congratulations in managing them. But there's a couple of things I want to talk to you guys about, but everybody talked about them already. But the last but not least was, I got a chance to see Marjorie a couple of days ago. And she told me about the ordeal about the seating. And I said, you know what? Somebody should make a motion and a second to make a permanent seat for John and one for Marjorie Johnson, since they always here. And they are great, they're great citizens, Mr. Mayor. I know you shaking your head right now. But they definitely support this community and I know they truly love this community. And I also want to say congratulations to my dear friend, Ann Ruby, who retired. And she's gonna be a full-time advocate, Mr. Mayor.
Say she did what?
Retired from her-
She told me she was gonna work another year when I first got here.
No, no, she loved you so much, she wanted to retire so that she could continue to send memos, 2 and 3 and 4 in the morning to you guys. But again, and last but not least, and I'm gonna change, we actually, Ann got me working with the Neighborhood Watch. We have our first meeting on the 9th of August at the Midtown Center. Commissioner, I'd love for you to come and visit us and thank you for being our keynote speaker. And the city, the staff, I love Daytona Beach. I got a chance to look over some of the things that y'all planning on doing with your money you got from COVID. And a lot of great ideas. Thank you very much. I'm happy with our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Patricia Hurd.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Patricia H. Hurd, 822 Vernon Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm not gonna take up too much of your time, but I've been hearing tonight about Neighborhood Watch. I live in Zone 6, which is south of Bellevue Avenue. We have had Neighborhood Watch in our neighborhood before and it was in Zone 6. Neighborhood Watch, I should not have to go across international or in another zone to have a meeting. We have places in Zone 6, the Dickerson Center and everywhere else, to have a meeting. I must say, Mr. Steve doesn't live in Zone 6. I say Zone 6 because Paula is the, Paula Reid is the commissioner. So I'll probably be there, so I'll be speaking out as usual. And I just wanted you to know, Mayor and City Manager, that it's not a Neighborhood Watch when you got to leave a neighborhood going two miles, three miles to get there. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Daytona Beach?
Hold up.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute.
Yes, ma'am.
Perhaps Mrs. Hurd does not know the boundaries of my zone. But the Midtown Center is Zone 6. And there are citizens up to North Street that are in my zone. So either way, somebody's gonna have to cross International Speedway. Now, it was hell, uh-uh, your time is up, ma'am. It was held-
Yes.
No, no, when you walked away, it was up.
Your time's up. You gotta come back next week. Just, okay.
When the, when it was flourishing under Mr. Rico Brown, it was held on the South Side for years. And he did-
And you never did come.
And he moved. And now it's on this side to try to accommodate that part of Zone 6. Plus, I started, when we revitalized this, I didn't start the Neighborhood Watch. When we revitalized the Neighborhood Watch, it was at the Dickerson Center. And we outgrew the Mikell Brown Center. And I felt like maybe they needed somewhere that was larger and somewhere that was newer. I wanted to give them something that was newer. And that's why we went to the Midtown Center. Now, when the Neighborhood Watch meets, they can vote on where they want to go. They don't have to go to Midtown. This isn't a Paula Reid thing. I was just trying to provide an opportunity for them to have somewhere nice to meet. And that's how that came about. But the Midtown Multicultural and Educational Center is in Zone 6.
Great job, Commissioner, responding. We appreciate that. We are not a city without opinions. Let us continue to love one another and share our opinions. Good night, Daytona Beach.